Please be upstanding for his worship. The mayor of the London Borough of Hounslow, councillor Vishnu Gaurang, accompanied by the chief executive. Okay, good evening all the member and please be seated, thank you. Okay, it's seven o'clock just passed I think a minute, so let's we start. Now first thing is item number one to five. Good evening, I am councillor Vishnu Gaurang, fifty-sixth mayor of London Borough of Hounslow. And I welcome everyone to this meeting of the council of the London Borough of Hounslow. May I now ask everyone present to make sure that their telephone are on silent mode please? And whilst public may to it, councillor may not. I guess we got just one public here tonight, so welcome her also. Please remember that the Hounslow House is still operating on one meter social distancing rules. So please be careful to maintain this distance if you need to move from your seat for any reason. Do all member have the agenda document for tonight? Thank you, and also the supplementary agenda? Thank you. I would like to remind all member that all the debate should be done through the mayor. And any points of order can only be about breaches of the constitution or law. And I wish to see fairness and quotacy in discussion with no interruption or talking during the contribution of others. Finally, please do not turn on your microphone until I have asked you to speak. The microphones are connected to the video cameras used for our webcast. And so if you press them too soon, they move from the person who is actually speaking. So please be noted this thing, thank you. We will now move on to the first item of the agenda. It's apologies for absent and declaration of interest from the members. I've got quite lot of list of apology here. Councillor Patrick Barr, Richard Easton, Gabriella Giles, Councillor Sivraj Grual, Councillor Saitham Eibhan, Councillor Hinamir, Alan Michal, Councillor Santunarajwath, Councillor Devina Ram, Councillor Danish Shid, Councillor Salman Sahin, Councillor Corina Smart and Councillor Raghavinda Siddhu. Is there any more apology for absent from the member? Aniv Khan please.
Councillor Haline Atwar here.
Now, just hold on, I ask councillor Aniv Khan first and then I will come back to you, thank you.
Chair councillor Nisar Malik.
Councillor Vikram Grual.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, apologies for councillor Asao Keani.
Thank you. Now councillor Surindra Parola here.
Chair apologies from councillor Haline Atwar.
Thank you. Sorry, councillor Grual please, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillor George, councillor Sray and councillor Chopra as well please, apologies.
Thank you. I now move to the apology for lateness or leaving the meeting early, anybody? Apology for lateness and meeting leaving early? Oh, yeah, councillor Samia Chowdhury please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be leaving a little bit early, thank you.
Thank you, noted, anybody? Councillor Chowdhury please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, same, I'll be leaving a little early today, this evening as well, thank you.
Thank you, I think that's all. Now let's we move to the, to draw the member attention to the document in the agenda on the declaration and interest. Any declaration of interest? Thank you. Okay, now we move to agenda item two. Sorry, it's just the paperwork is messed up, not worry, anyway, let's we start again, agenda number two, announcement. We now come to announcements. We start this evening with the sad and terrible news, which we learned a week ago about the death of our colleague and friends councillor Javed Akunjada. His unexpected passing has been a cause of much grief and sadness to all who knew him, including among councillors. I realize that there will be many here tonight who will find hearing the tributes to councillor Akunjada very difficult and distressing. However, it is entirely correct that we pay tribute to him here this evening. And I know he would have been gratified to know that's member from across the political spectrum have asked to speak in his honor. I will therefore begin by asking leader of the council, councillor Steve Curran, as leader of the council to speak first, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, indeed a very solemn occasion this evening. And it seems such a short time ago that he was in this chamber. Doing what he did best was act as a councillor representing his ward and his residents. He was a well liked man, family man, someone with, I found, had immense patience and calmness about him. I was absolutely shocked when I heard the news last week, as many of his comrades here this evening, councillors and officers were as well. I had the privilege of meeting his wife with councillor Lily Bath last week, which again was a very upsetting occasion, not least because of her, his young children were there as well, and that makes it even more painful. But he was a hardworking councillor, only elected in 2018. He was a great backbencher, but he was a bit more than that. He supported other councillors in the short time he was a councillor. He certainly very much supported the residents and businesses in his ward and he supported all those around him. He was well liked in his community, he was a religious man. Faith I think played a big part in his life, in his family life. And that came across in the work and how he approached being a councillor. He was also a solicitor, again, someone who was serving the people of his borough and our communities. It will be greatly missed. We've had tributes made to him, certainly to me, from right across the borough, from the police, visited, the safety neighbours team, police visited his house on the evening that we, we went there Lily and I, and they gave a bunch of flowers for his family. So he did touch everyone and it's been really hard to think about anything else really over the last week or so and at such a young age of forty-five. I think it's a reminder to us all that we need to look after each other, be respectful of each other, show compassion to each other, because we never know what's round the corner. I'm sure he's at peace now and he would want, I know, for us to carry on to do, doing our business on behalf of the residents or the borough. It's a tremendous loss to this council, tremendous loss to his comrades, to his other councillors and the council. So I'd like to offer my sincerest condolences on behalf of the council to his friends and more importantly to his family. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Curran. I would now, would like to invite the... I know that's okay, now councillor Magira is ready for the announcement, but can just hold on a second, I will go with the deputy leader Lily Bath first, then I will come back to you, thank you. May I request now Lily Bath to speak please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I echo the words made by our leader. I was obviously deeply shocked as well when I heard the news and I couldn't think of anything else either. It was particularly... It was particularly distressing when we met his family and his children. And it's, and I know that councillor Hinamir is not here tonight, and she has actually asked me to read something out, which I will do, but I know that she's been supporting the family a lot, which is really good to see. In terms of councillor Javed Akhazada, he was, he was a really, he was a real gentleman, and he was incredibly kind and sympathetic. He actually called me a few times. I remember when my husband was very unwell, and I really did appreciate it. And he, I think he absolutely understood when to be human and to take his councillor hat off and be able to interact and support people. And I think that's really appreciated. He will be greatly missed, that goes without saying, and he was a great asset to his community. But I did promise that I would read out a tribute by councillor Hinamir, who couldn't be here today. So this is, this is on behalf of Hinamir, and she wanted me to read it out. She says that Javed wasn't just my colleague, but he was my friend and probably my best friend. In addition to our shared passion for politics, we were both committed solicitors, proud of our Pakistani heritage and Islamic faith, and of course, we campaigned together for many years for the same values. He was absolutely committed to working for justice and equality in his private, professional and public life. When the first coronavirus lockdown hit the UK, Javed was instrumental in supporting my efforts to ensure that no one went hungry. The Care Food Bank was established quickly, and Javed was first in the queue to help. His commitment to that never wavered, nor did his attendance, whatever the weather. The work of the Care Food Bank will continue in his memory. I have many treasured memories, not least the 2019 and 2021 Labour Party Conference, where we would sit with fellow councillors and other colleagues reorganising the world. I guess that reorganisation will have to wait. A little now, we are one less. He was a very proud husband and father, and I cannot even imagine their pain now. I hope that with the passing of time, they will be proud of all that he achieved in his too-short life. During the Afghan evacuation, he worked closely and tirelessly with me and Seema Malhotra to support those trying to flee the awful situation who had connections with Hounslow. He was my rock and support earlier this year when I found myself on difficulty, and I doubt I could have got through that ordeal without his wise counsel and advice. When in 2019, he was elected by the Labour group to be the chief whip, I was concerned that as a relative new council, he might find it difficult. But I needn't have worried, because he was, he tried incredibly hard to resolve issues informally. Javed touched many of our lives, and we have lost a friend and colleague. Bedford residents have lost a hard-working and effective councillor. But worst of all, his family have lost a husband, father, son and brother. If there is anything we can learn from his passing, it is that life is short, and we should always strive to be a better person and through that, improve the lives of others. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lily Bath. I now invite the tributes from the other member. The first, I would like to invite the councillor McGregor, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you very much indeed. I'm going to ask my colleagues councillor Bidof, councillor Dennis and councillor Tack to speak on behalf of the group in due course. I just want to say something to the leader, to say how grateful I am that he gave me an early warning, pretty well as soon as he heard he was on the phone to me to discuss the matter. Very appropriate, very constitutional, something which I shall always remember. I will just say one thing about councillor Akhazada. We always talked at the end of each council meeting. He was very easygoing, very pleasant. He's a great loss. He was one of the good guys.
Thank you councillor McGregor. Anybody? I think I will, I will go with the first, with the Vikram Gruwal.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is an incredibly difficult moment, not just for me, but for colleagues of both sides of this chamber. Councillor Akhazada, or we often used to call him JD, as abbreviation of his name and his nickname. He was one of a certain kind. He wasn't just a colleague, he was least of all colleague, actually. He was more of a friend, a brother, and most importantly, a person you could speak to and rely on in life. He, as councillor McGregor said, he was one of the good guys. I have no qualms in saying he was the best guy in this room, and he always was. A pleasure to speak to, a pleasure to conversate with, and always a pleasure to see. Attending his funeral on Saturday, I spoke to many friends, family and also clients of his as a solicitor. And I was truly taken aback by the amount of clients of his, former clients. And I said that he never actually asked for money for his service. He did it for free, and he did it because he cared for people. And that's something we saw in this chamber, is something all the constituents of his in Bedford would agree to, and all of us in this chamber as councillors. He went above and beyond every single day for people and making the world a better place. So it's one of those unfortunate tales of someone that is left too soon. They've left two young kids behind and a grieving wife and family. I always say the good people go first and go young, and that's certainly the case in this instance. So it was a true honour and privilege to have met, worked with, celebrating my wedding, you know, met many times outside of work, even a few days before he passed away, JD, and he will sorely be missed. So my heart, my thoughts and my prayers go out to his wife and his kids. And I think all of us in this chamber beyond will do our best to support them in the future. So thank you, JD.
Thank you councillor Vikram Gruwal. I now would like to invite John Abidov, councillor John Abidov, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for allowing me time when so many want to speak. And thank you too for what you said at Javed's funeral. It captured what we all thought, and you spoke in a very moving and heartfelt way. Thank you. I didn't know Javed anything like as well as you, his Labour colleagues, and I'd like to say how sorry I am that you've lost such a special member of your team. I saw at the funeral how important he was to you and how sad you are. Javed befriended me quite soon after we were elected, stopping for a few words whenever we saw each other, keen to be kind in what is not often a kind place to be. He wanted to draw people in to help them feel included despite political differences, as others have said, and to involve them in a wider world, one they might not have experienced. It was you, Mr Mayor, who invited us all to the community iftar in May 2019. It was Javed, councillor Kulik Malik, councillor Asal Kiani, both Hinas, councillor Mir and councillor Kiani and councillor Komal Chowdhury who made me feel so welcome. And it was Javed who saw the fear I felt when I was unexpectedly asked to speak, and who said gently, "Just say something about the evening, just a few words." Low-key, non-political, appreciative is what he meant. And it's very hard not to be appreciative of the generosity expressed in so many ways at a community iftar. And so I did, and it seemed to go down well enough. Something else went down, not well enough, but repeatedly, the scarf on my head. It slithered down as soon as I pulled it up, every time. My embarrassment was huge, and I apologised especially to Javed. He sent me photos later, including one of me pulling up the scarf yet again, I think, to tease me. A few months later, Javed WhatsApped me, asking if we could meet, as he had something for me. Standing near the photocopier, Javed handed me not one, but two scarves. I was overwhelmed. "To be honest," he said, "I asked my wife to buy them while she was in Pakistan." We both chuckled. I put them aside specifically to wear the next time I was with Javed in a mosque, assuming it would be at the next community iftar. The pandemic prevented that. But I did wear them with Javed in a mosque on Saturday at his funeral. And I'm wearing them both right now, excuse me, as we pay tribute to him. Everyone speaks of Javed's warm character, his generous spirit, his amazing smile, and I'd like to add his quick sense of humour. Our WhatsApp exchanges are full of fun. He and I laughed quietly about something whenever we met. This was a better place when Javed was here. I hope his spirit will be long-lasting, and I look forward to wearing his scarves whenever I'm in a mosque, when of course I will remember him with affection and appreciation for his kind, warm thoughtfulness and the laughs we shared.
Thank you councillor John Abidov. I now would like to invite the councillor Hanipkan.
Thank you very much, Chair. My words, my words will be very brief, but I think many of my colleagues have already spoken so eloquently already about this wonderful individual. I just wanted to share my thoughts on this wonderful comrade, who was always a peacemaker. If anybody knew him, would know that he was there, first of all, to create peace, and not only amongst us, amongst everybody else. And he never thought ill of anybody, and his, he always wanted to talk about unity, wanted to bring us together. And all the conversations that I ever had about, with him, many of them reflected about our society, how important it was for our society to be more humble, more tolerant and more caring. And that has been described in the way many people have already spoken today already. And I've mentioned about his kind nature and his willing to help people. I mean, he's, he was like a hero for many people and very much for his friends as well. In the tribute that councillor Lily Bath mentioned, written by Hinamir, I would echo especially with the work that he did with the Afghanistan people. As you know, many of us got involved quite quickly. And all I had to do was send out a message, whoever wants to get involved. Again, he was one of the first people who approached me and said, "Yes, I would help." And he came on numerous occasions on that. And, and on the, and on the other thing is that we are very sorry and very sad, but that is the way of the world. And what we say in our culture is that God fell in love with him and took him early. And that's, and that's a true fact. And the only other thing that I'll say is that surely we belong to God almighty, and surely we will return to him as well. And all I, my last prayer is that we, we find many more Javeds or many more JDs. Yeah? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Hanipkan. I now would like to invite the councillor Kuldeep Thak, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. When I heard the news about councillor Akhazada, I couldn't believe the news was true. I had met him three days before his demise during the area forum. And we also shared a joke or two with councillor Sidhu. I always found councillor Akhazada to making valuable and positive contributions in different meetings. He was a fellow councillor in overview and scrutiny and in area forum. I didn't have too much interaction with him on personal note, but I was well aware with his involvement in several community groups, given the food bank, the community litter picking and other community groups in Feltham and Bedford area. He was a great guy. He has left a wife and two beautiful daughters and a family. He'll be greatly missed by both groups, Labour and Conservatives, as a good guy. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Kuldeep Thak. I now would like to invite the councillor Punith Gruwal, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to say only a few words and echo what everyone else in the chamber has said and share sentiments that no doubt all of us have felt for the last week or so and still do today. Shock, horror, disbelief and sheer sadness. It is simply hard to comprehend that JD's gone. Taken so soon and leaving behind those most important to him. His beautiful young daughters, his wife to grow up all alone. I met Javed when he first joined the council, a happy man, an infectious smile, full of energy and always willing to go that extra mile. He had something different about him, something that's rare to find, and most importantly, rare to find in politics. A united attitude, full of possibilities, never annoyed and never angry, always at hand to make it better. He'd call to check in, wish me happy birthday, wish the family happy divali, and even most recently, to check in on how my interview went. He cared. He cared about everybody around him. He was selfless. My thoughts go out to his family, those that will have to face the real struggle of not having him around every day, to try and work around the hole he's left in their lives and in their hearts. I hope that they know that if they need anything, we're all here for them to help that, to help it make and make it a bit easier along the way. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Punith Gruwal. I see that there are still people who wish to speak in tributes to councillor Akhazada. I understand and respect this wish. But we also need to consider the rest of the business of the evening. I therefore intend to take up to three more people, and then we will stand in silence as mark of respect. So I would like to invite first as councillor Michael Dennis, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was, I was very sorry to hear of the passing of councillor Akhazada. Councillor Akhazada joined the council at the same time as me back in 2018. I spoke with him several times at the council, after borough council and other meetings. And I shared our experiences of what it was like to be new and being a councillor. Right from the start, councillor Akhazada was actively involved in his duty for residents and contributing to meetings. His presence at Bedford Lakes Panel, Feltham Hanworth Area Forum, the Borough Council, the Housing and Environmental Scrutiny Panel, and even Overview and Scrutiny Panel introduced him to a wide breadth of policy and government. Impressive for any councillor, let alone one in his first term. It was my pleasure to attend his funeral at Hounslow Jamia Masjid and Islamic Centre on Saturday and to hear all the lovely stories of councillor Akhazada's commitment and role as a community leader, both inside and outside his council duties. One story struck me in particular, where councillor Akhazada successfully housed a lady fleeing the turmoil in Afghanistan. His legacy and reputation will endure. He is the sort of leader that I wish to emulate in the future, and he will be much missed by all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Michael Dennis. I've got two more member. They are councillor Amritman and Samia Chowdhury. So first, I would like to invite councillor Amritman, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you very much. This is a tribute that I didn't wish to make so early on to somebody so young. We all knew him as a politician, but I really want to talk about Javed the person on a personal basis. I knew Javed when we joined the council, when he joined the council. And he used myself and John Chat as a soundboard for a lot of stuff that he was interested in doing. And the only advice that I offered to him was that, "Look, there'll always be politicians, but there are very few good people, people who really say what they do and do what they say. And if you're one of those, then you will go far." And he took that on board. And I remember Punith... And I remember Punith touched a lot on, on this issue. I never heard Javed ever say a bad word about any councillor, even while I was lambasting everybody else, but he would never say a bad word about that person. And that's a unique quality in any individual. Forget the politics, because politicians are all very easy and ready to jump on others' back to give somebody a hard time. But Javed, I never heard him ever say a bad word. I never heard him raise his voice. He always had a positive attitude, a huge smile. And we always ended every meeting that I ever had, a discussion, whether it's on the phone or whether it's, you know, meeting in person, always on a positive note. And that again is a unique, you know, they always say, you know, if, if you want to see your kids happy, always tell them a good story before they go to bed. So they always wake up and, and they're happy. Javed was one of those people, you know, I, I could talk to him and I wouldn't feel bad afterwards. So for me, he's a huge loss. I know that I spoke to the mosque secretary and, and the trustees and it's a huge loss for the mosque. Because, you know, as a Patan, he had very similar qualities to me as a Sikh. And we, we, we discussed a lot of things. And certainly within the mosque community, he brought a lot of positive things through the Patan community to them and they will miss him. As a council, all those qualities are superimposed here. And we will miss him, I will miss him, I will miss that smile. I will miss his positiveness. And all too often in a very toxic environment around here. You know, you, you want to hear positive, good news stories and Javed was that positive, good news story. And my heart goes out to his family. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Amritman. I now would like to invite the councillor Samiya Chowdhury, please.
First of all, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for giving me this opportunity to say a few words for Javed. It's really hard for me to stand here. I thought I might not be able to, but I have managed to put my hand up. It's, it was completely shock. I just want to say, just a few words to say, he was really, really great councillor. He did whatever he could do, not as a councillor, as a normal community member and as a normal human being. He helped everyone during pandemic. He supported so many families, not just in Bedford, in the ward I live in, in Feltham North and his family, his friends. It's, it's a great loss. We'll never forget Javed's smile. He was always positive. Yes, we, I've heard a few of my colleagues saying that about politics, but if we, if we say something about from the norm, normal community was, I think he was a great person, a great human being. And he will be always, always we'll miss him. And thank, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for giving me a chance. And we'll always be here for his family if there is any support they need.
Thank you very much councillor Samiya Chowdhury. I would like to thank all the members who have paid tributes to councillor Javed Akunzada this evening. I know that there are other members also would like to contribute and their thought is still there. Because of the timing, we have to move on. So that's why I know that this passing has tossed everyone in the council and upset all of us who knew him well, either personally or professionally. On behalf of everyone, I would like formally to send our thoughts and sympathies to his wife, children, family and friends. We will now stand in silence for one minute. Thank you, please sit down. Thank you. Well, last week, borough, in fact us all, so it's a sad news. There has also been some very good news for the council recently. And it is right that we also take time to note it. So I hope that all member will be pleased at the recent news of Hounslow being made council of the year. At the local government Chronicle Awards. This is positive reflection on us all. Every elected member of the council, every member of the staff and every member of the public who lives or works in Hounslow. It is together that we have succeeded so positively. So I would like to invite leader of the council, councillor Steve Curran to speak about this great honour. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's quite difficult to want to celebrate a, a great success after what we've just been discussing and the minute silence. So I shall be very brief. As you've already said, this is an honour for whole of the borough, our businesses, our residents, our community groups, all councillors, all staff who work for the, the council. I believe this is the first time we won a national award. We were up against strong opposition from Goffilly in Wales, from Salford in Manchester and elsewhere. There was a long process to go through, at least two assessment sessions. One big one held in this room actually, where the nine judges met our staff, met our partners and met councillors to talk about the work we've, we've been undertaking over the last two years. And we should remember that we've won this with the shadow of COVID-19 affecting us all and affecting the things we've done. So I'm really proud that we've won it. I'm proud for everyone I've just spoken about, spoken about. It, it is a privilege to be the leader of the council, to win an award like this. And I know that everyone has worked so hard for it. It's been a true one council approach over the last eighteen months. And when I spoke to the judges after the award, many of them were very clear that it was what they heard and what they were told when they came here, not just spoke to councillors, but spoke to officers, spoke to the voluntary sector, spoke to our major partners. And they got a real sense of, of one Hounslow, of always stepping forward and never stepping back. So a great honour and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Steve. I thought that we could see the trophy on the table here. But anyway, we, we heard the very good news. So I would like to ask everybody to say clap their hand, please. Well done, everybody. Thank you. Moving into the next announcement, I would first like to thank all members who came to my inaugural dinner a few weeks ago, there on the sixth floor of Hounslow House. It was lovely to see so many councillors and friends enjoying themselves. And of course, it was also a charity fundraising event for my mayoral charity, the SAFA, which stands for the Sailor, Soldiers, Airmen and Family Association. In the end of the inaugural, we raised very nearly pound three thousand, three thousand pound we nearly raised. So thank you very much for everybody who involved and comes to join in the party. Thank you. I would now would like to invite the cabinet member, if they have any more announcement, please. Councillor Bruce, please first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got two announcements this evening, two pieces of success for our borough or things I'd like to share with members and the wider public today. We are continuing our very successful holiday activity and food scheme over the Christmas period. This ran really successfully in Easter and in the summer and in the half terms for those young people in receipt of free school meals. So I'm delighted to say that for those aged five for fifteen in our, in our borough, in receipt of those will be entitled to attend some or all, as many as they can, of these activities over the Christmas period. There's a range of things going on, twenty seven sites, sports, cookery, arts, computing and more. If people are interested in this, I would suggest that they search for Hounslow Holiday Activities. There is a dedicated webpage, a part of the, the website that we have available. There will be information going out in Members Matters and the Electronic Hounslow Matters on Friday. This will run at the first part of the Christmas holidays. But just to be clear for those who may be concerned about the free school meal vouchers that we have had running throughout previous holidays, that will continue for both weeks as well. The individuals, families will receive those for the full two weeks of the holiday period. So really good news there that we are continuing that. My second announcement, I'm delighted to let members know about the huge success of one of our residents. Alan Coleman has been appointed to the position of Head of Men's Performance Cricket at Middlesex County Cricket Club. Now, I think in football parlance, that would be head coach or team manager. But Alan has lived in Hounslow all his life. He attended Bedford Primary School and Longford Secondary School, which is now called Rivers Academy. He played at Wickham House Cricket Club in Osterleigh, which is how I know him because I played with him. He is the same age as me, far better at cricket than, than I am, I'm afraid, and certainly has been all his life. So it's fantastic to have heard this news a couple of weeks ago. And I am sure members and the wider public in Hounslow wish him all, all the greatest success. And as a fan of Middlesex County Cricket Club, I hope that he is successful in his job as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Bruce. Now I would like to invite councillor Pritham Gurwal, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This year, our digital festival has been a great success. Due to COVID-19, like last year, there was another virtual festival that ran all through November. We promoted four landmarks, connect, belong, grow and flourish. The festival has informed our residents and partners how to connect with the council and informed everyone what we are doing in Hounslow Council to provide better services for our residents. Lots of hard work and time has gone into this. So I'd like to thank all our officers for their hard work and job well done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there any more cabinet member for announcement? Now, thank you. We will now move into the next item, which is minute of the, our last meeting. You can see the page eight to page forty seven. I now come to the minutes of the last meeting of the council, which was held on twenty first September, twenty twenty one. Firstly, may I draw member attention to some proposed amendment detail in the supplementary agenda? Supplementary agenda paper, which was published earlier today. And I think it's all on the table too. Secondly, may I ask member if they have any additional correction for accuracy that they wish to propose? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, just on that point, Mr. Mayor, we're, we're more than happy to accept the corrections for misspelling or grammatical mistakes. But we're not minded to accept this other raft of, of changes. We're more than happy that we note these as an addendum and they go to an addendum with the actual current minutes, which we will approve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This is the matter of correction. Councillor Bidda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think that the leader of the other party has checked against the records because mine are just correcting the order in which they appear. One point is listed later when in fact it happened earlier. So I am correcting to make this a correct record.
Thank you. And now are there any more matter arising from the minutes? May I remind you that this is just a clarification, not to open any debate. Can I invite now councillor Steve Curran, please?
Yep, thanks, Mr. Mayor. As I say, we're happy to accept any misspellings or any other grammatical mistakes. But we think that this raft of other changes is not appropriate and we should accept them, when we will accept them as a note or as an addendum to, to the minutes as published.
Councillor McGregor, please.
Mr. Mayor, comment on page twenty seven. And it's in the large paragraph at the top of the page. It's thirteen lines down, which starts, "By contrast, he observed that the Conservative opposition had only submitted one alternative budget during the time he'd been leader since two thousand and fourteen." The point he was trying to make was that there'd been no submission of an alternative budget. And the reason for that was because the Labour Party had guillotined the budget debates on most occasions. I also wanted to point out that for four years, from two thousand and seven to two thousand and ten, the Labour Party did not submit an alternative budget.
Councillor Hearn, please.
There is a rather amusing misspelling of councillor Giles's name in the page seventeen, additional information for the meeting. And I'm sure, I'm sure that will be put right. Be a shame if it slipped through.
Thank you. And now finally, the leader of the council, Steve Curran, please.
Yeah, I'm grateful for councillor McGregor's points, but he's trying to redraft the minutes. I don't think that's appropriate. Our, our position is very clear and we're happy to move to the vote on it.
Thank you, Steve. Now let's move to the vote. Anybody in the favour? Thank you. Thank you. Against? Thank you. You can put down your hand. And anybody abstain? No, thank you. So now the leader said is accepted. So now, can I do the minute now? May I ask the member to agree the minute, subject to any amendments? Thank you. Okay, we are now moving into the agenda item number four, which is petitions. It's page 48 to 52. We now move to petitions. We start with the first stage of the process, which is to ask if any member has any new petition to be handed in. Are there any member that's the petition to add it in to the mayor, please?
Yep, Mr Mayor, I've got a petition. Just double checking, it's already in there, I don't think it is. Oh, it is, Mr Mayor, sorry, apologies. I don't need to hand it in. It's already there.
If that case, then thank you, Steve. Now we move to any more petition? Now, thank you. So member may, we now move to the second part of the process. As a member will see from the report, there are no petition due to be presented to the council itself this evening. Therefore, may I ask member to note the petition listed in the appendix to the report? Thank you. Agenda number five. Now, this is the reference from the Cabinet, Medium Term Financial Strategy. See page 53 to 117, and the times allows 30 minutes. We now come to the agenda item five. As a member will be aware, Councillor Rajuwa has had to send his apology this evening. So I shall be asking Councillor Curran to speak in his place on the next two items. Therefore, I would like to invite Councillor Steve Curran to propose the report, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I would like to move the report and wish Councillor Rajuwa a speedy recovery. It's a shame he couldn't get his test through earlier today, but there we are. So I would do wish him well. So I would like to move the report. And I want to offer some thanks actually and acknowledge that the government, in its autumn budget statement and spending review, has given some, in overall terms, some more money to us, but they could still lead to real terms funding cuts in 22, 23. And we know that the spending review has been delayed again. There's been some noises coming from government of when that might be, but I'm very concerned about what lies ahead, and I know Councillor Rajuwa will be saying the same thing, and I'm sure members on our side of the chamber will be saying the same things as well in a few minutes. We're very worried about the pressures on the NHS and the effect that will have on adult social care and on children's service. We've had the terrible tragedy in Walsall this week with the conviction of two people for the murder of a young child. This would undoubtedly lead to more pressure on children's services as the national investigation inquiry takes shape. And you've had Jeremy Hunt this week, who was a former health minister and a chair of the Health Select Committee, raising real concerns about is the market for adult social care fit for purpose and is the role of hedge funds appropriate in that market? And we've seen stresses and strains in social care for many years. We've also now got the issue of funding for TFL, and that directly affects us in Hounslow. It directly affects our residents and our businesses. We need good public services. We can't afford not to have a settlement between TFL, the mayor and the government as soon as possible, because again, we're concerned that this may have a detrimental effect on business, on growth, on the local economy. We still not clear on the effects of the pandemic, and we've seen over the last couple of weeks further restrictions being reintroduced because of the new variant and from predictions today from the Prime Minister that things may get worse before they get better. It's another body blow to us in Hounslow, who have disproportionately suffered from the economic fallout of Covid. And we've always said this, and it was my colleague, Councillor Dennison, who coined this phrase, "We only put council tax up because we have to, not because we can." And we are in a difficult position on council tax, and we'll need to make a decision in the new year on whether or not there will be a council tax increase. We're in a very difficult position. The levelling up agenda, whatever that means, I don't know what it means actually. I know for a fact that it means that more money has gone, that we're sorry, that we've got less money in London as a whole than any other region in the country. We are supposed to be the powerhouse, we are supposed to be the growth machine where the economic powerhouse and growth comes from, which then stimulates the rest of the country. I think we're in a very difficult position, a precarious position in the next weeks and months, unless we get a very good financial settlement. And we've got the ever increasing demand for services, and I know Councillor Bruce will talk about that in a moment, and so will Councillor Attetson, but particularly in children's and adults, particularly in the Special Educational Needs Budget around transport, which has been a perennial problem for us. So there's a lot to think about and to discuss. So I'd like to move the report there. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councillor Steve Curran. I now would like to see the seconded of the proposal, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to second the report, and I will reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Lilivat. Now, I would like to, now it's gone to for the debate, and we'd like to invite the members for the debate. Thank you. Councillor McGregor, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I propose to deal with the summary rather than get into the detail, as I do not wish to put Councillor Curran at a disadvantage, given the fact he's only had about half an hour to look at this. I appreciate he's seen it at Cabinet, but he's reliant heavily on Councillor Rajuwa to get the numbers right. I'd like to pay tribute to the senior finance team who have provided senior members of the Conservative group with hugely important briefings about what's going on and about the mechanics and the issues that are affecting national situation and how it impacts on Hounslow. However, the key thing here is that in the recommendation, we can agree that Appendix A needs to be looked at under 1A, and we'll come back to that in the full budget debate whenever that is held, rather than the 10 minutes stymying that's been typical of this council over many years. We will look to see the associated living, the setting of a balanced revenue budget. Well, there's a surprise. After all, you've been carrying an overdraft of unallocated and unrecovered savings, which have been promised but not met, and they're actually a feature of this medium term financial strategy. So who are you trying to kid? Come off it. Agree the general fund based budget proposes of 2.416, that's absolutely fine, because that's a technical matter that needs no debate. Look at the question of special educational needs and disability service structure. Well, you turned that down last March. Our budget specifically stated that we'd be funding SEN and EHCP, partly because of the personal experience of councillors trying to get a result. I have examples of EHCPs which should have been produced within the statutory 20 week period, which have completely failed to do so and have taken more than a year to get to a point where they can actually be utilized. I'm very pleased to see that we're going to put more money in there, but you've missed a year out in doing that. It's not funny, it's putting people at risk and it's putting disabled children at huge risk. The CapEx under 1E. Well, the problem with this is it's a forecast, and the forecast going forward with CapEx was difficult to understand and yield. What is the yield you get from your CapEx? What's the value for money? What's the cost benefit analysis? Where are we going with this? The difficulty is, as things change on a year by year basis, you are reliant, quite rightly, on grants from various sources, including national government. Councillor Curran quite rightly talked about money from government, but it's not their money, it's the taxpayers' money. It's our money that the government is spending by giving to Hounslow. But let's get it right, the money belongs to the taxpayer, so does everything in this place belong to taxpayers. So it's not our money to fiddle around with, it's taxpayer money we've got to act as trustees for, and we say this year in, year out. The capital strategy, which I mentioned a moment ago, in terms of the relationship to the capital programme, is perfectly reasonable, because you're looking at the way you're going to try and fund the balances that are required to meet the council's needs, but you're putting aside money for contingency risk reserve, which doesn't necessarily need to be put there. We're going to end up with 20 million of contingency. That's taxpayer money being held by the council in reserve just in case something might happen. It's not good enough. It is not good enough, because it's not good accounting and it's not good risk management. The general fund reserves proposals look decent enough, because it's the general fund and not much can happen there, but quite simply, there's a lack of ambition, there's lack of coherence, and one gets a feeling that there's a chaotic approach, because you're relying on so many other sources. You make one comment about the fact that you'd like to keep the council tax low. If you actually evaluated the proposed balance sheet at the end of the financial year this year, they have the opportunity to keep the council tax low. They have the opportunities to actually reduce the council tax, because the contingencies and the risk management effect of those reserves is over egged. And the other point I also want to make is item 2.6, you're allocating 5.5 million to the one Hounslow transformation. And that's in one year. Well, we spent 5.35 million completely transforming this council over four years, and we got 76 million pounds out of it. You're getting 11 million pounds kilometer. Not a brilliant result, is it? Not terribly clever. It's not good enough. I'm delighted to tell you that I think our financial team and our management accounting team work under huge stresses and strains trying to deliver something for you. They will find it easier working for me after May 2022.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councillor McGregor. I now would like to invite the Councillor Tom Bruce, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Councillor Curran mentioned it earlier, the incident that we've been hearing about over the last few days, last couple of weeks from Walsall, is the kind of incident that keeps me up at night, not because there's any direct effect on me, but the concern that a child in this borough could be maybe going through something that we've heard about in the last couple of weeks, sickens me and obviously worries me, and I know colleagues...
Excuse me, Tom, excuse me. Councillor McGregor, do you mind to switch off your mic, please?
I beg your pardon. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, carry on, please.
Notice Councillor McGregor doesn't want to hear what I have to say. It does concern me. I know my colleagues, my equivalents across London that I talk to, and I'm sure nationally as well, feel exactly the same. We are all corporate parents here, and I'm sure it equally worries people here. The discussions that I've been hearing about this are looking at teachers. Well, what could have the teachers done more? What could social workers have done more? What should the council be doing more? Well, I put the blame not directly for that incident, but the general lies of the issues in social care squarely at the door of the government. Lack of funding over the last 10 or 11 years is only down to them. That is where we should be looking, not for the overworked, not to the overworked teachers, not to the overworked social workers, not to council budgets that are beyond stretch, which we have seen in the last 10 or 11 years here. The DSG, the Dedicated Schools Grant, money that goes directly to schools, has been given an uplift this year, and I'm grateful. Councillor Curran expresses gratitude for more money from the government. We're always grateful when more money comes. More money to the schools block. But once again, we talked about, Councillor McGregor talks about SEN, EHCPs, once again, the high needs block, but now we are no longer allowed to move money between those blocks, has more pressure put upon it, because the government refused to recognise the issues that are there. He talks about us not being able to recognise and putting more money in now. It is the government that are not recognising the issues, and that's where the pressure lies. The difficulties in our budget, in terms of overspend, in terms of where money should go, is all about demand. It is all about the demand led services. They are only increasing, they have only been increasing in demand, not just throughout the pandemic, but in the last 10 or 11 years. And I use that number, 10 or 11 years, absolutely to highlight what the government have not been doing for citizens across the country, for us as a council and for our borough's residents. I'd like to echo what Councillor Curran said about Councillor Rajuwa and echo the comments that Councillor McGregor made about the finance team. We are blessed with some fantastic members of staff here who do a really good job under very trying circumstances, but they are not alone, and I have highlighted specifically the reasons why they are there. So I have my concerns about what goes on in this borough, but the reason I have that is not because of our staff. I know our staff here work extremely hard, both in the finance team that I've just said and our social workers, our staff in the social care team and right across the Education and Children's Services Department. My concern is what the government are not doing for all of us. Thank you to Councillor Rajuwa, I hope he gets better soon, and thank you very much for a fantastic Medium Term Financial Strategy.
Thank you very much, Councillor Tom Bruce. I now would like to invite the Councillor Ron Musisha, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. And I'd like to maybe note what Councillor Curran had said at the beginning. And I'd like to maybe note what councillor Cowan had said at the beginning, which is, finally, I should have heard him say praising the government for the funding that he has received in the autumn budget, and also councillor Bruce as well over there, who acknowledges that the schools grant has had a boost, and thank you for stipulating that. But as always, with our colleagues on the Labour side, whenever they're given something, they always come back with some form of a put down to central government. But I have a proposition for you. Governments cannot do everything for us. At the end of the day, it comes down to us, the individuals, it comes down to the families, it comes down to the community. So the government has given you, as you've acknowledged already, the funding that you require, not fully all required, of course, I understand that, they haven't got endless amount of cash, all right, but they've given you the money that you've acknowledged that you have received. So the question is, you're asking what the government is doing for you. What are you doing for our people? What are you doing for our communities? What's your role in this? Is it just the government to hold your hand all the way through up to the point of service? Or can you do something meaningful to justify your existence as a council? So we know that 1.5 billion pounds of unringfenced grants were given to councils across the country, and we know that in addition to that, 670 million pounds was given to help local residents who are struggling to pay rent, sorry, to pay their council tax in the form of a grant to reduce council tax bills. That money has enabled residents to reclaim, sorry, councils to reclaim unpaid council tax bills from residents. That money is available to you. This is what the central government is doing to us. We have, this council has a surplus, I understand, of 2.3 million pounds of unspent business rates monies. Surplus. So we talk about lack of funding, but you actually have a surplus of monies that you've been given by central government, and you don't know what to do with it. I think 20 pound gift to everybody else, I mean, that was your solution to that. There are financial pressures, there are financial pressures, of course, throughout. There are uncertainties throughout. The pandemic has given us that uncertainty. But of course, with uncertainty and with pressures, councillor Raduat is not here, but pressure creates diamonds. I think he will understand what that means. And when there is pressure, you would expect someone to come up with a new solution, a new way of working, but this council just keeps blaming central government for more of their wars. So, don't get me wrong, everyone here knows exactly what is required. The answer is One Hounslow, isn't it? But when you think about One Hounslow, you've got 93 priorities of One Hounslow. That is not a way of spending the money that you've been given appropriately. So can I suggest something for you? Instead of having 93 priorities, let's have just one priority. The priority for One Hounslow, to put residents first. If we do that, then the solution for our problems here starts with the individual. It's not what the government can do for us, it's what the individuals can do for themselves. The government is there to protect us, yes, but there is something there to be said about you, the council, and us showing the public how we can be prudent about our finances and about our ways of life. So thank you so much. I do want to thank again councillor Bruce and councillor Cowan for supporting our government.
Thank you, councillor Musso. I would now invite the councillor Guy Lambert, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I've got an interesting input from councillor Musso and councillor McGregor. But councillor Musso says the government can't do everything for us. Well, that's true enough, but if we were Richmondshire, Richmond in North Yorkshire, one of the 20% less deprived areas of the country, which happens to have Rishi Sunak as its MP, plenty can be done there because they got the Regional Deprivation Fund, which was deprived of many of the most deprived areas. So this levelling up agenda is complete nonsense as far as we can see. It's a levelling down agenda for London. Here we are on the 7th of December, Transport for London has not got an agreed budget four days ahead, and the government can't get its act together to give a medium term plan for support for the budgets of local authorities. So councillor McGregor talks, says, things have been typical of the council for many years. Well, they have. Something's been typical of the council for many years. We've been coping with cuts in central support, we've been coping with it, we've been bringing in balanced budgets, we've been making it work, and we've been defending services, and that's what we've been doing all along. For many of those years, we didn't raise council tax at all. The extreme pressure on social care has caused us to put it up in the last couple of years. Councillor McGregor also talks about contingency. Well, part of the levelling up agenda, as it was announced, was to have HS2 and the Northern Powerhouse Rail. All of that is gone. All of that is gone because there was not any contingency taken, or there was loads of contingency, but it's overrun colossally due to the incompetence of the government. You talk about lack of ambition. Well, the lack of ambition of this council is shown by the fact we've got the best roads in London for the third year running, we're the council of the year, and we're one of the three best councils in London for parks, as all of those independently judged. So I think that looks like ambition. Maybe you don't. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Lambert. I now would like to invite councillor John Todd, please.
Okay, I'd like to contribute, and it's so exciting to have the leader speak first. I always remember councillor Sharma doing that with a punchy dynamic speech. He knew what he was talking about and wasn't relying on a third person. We normally have a nasty wash up at the end where we are described in unfavourable terms. So here we are, so the game's up to the leader tonight, I'm afraid. I'm looking at paragraph 12.2, the council has yet to consider its counter tax strategy for 2022. It's paragraph 12.2. I hope we do that before February, councillor Cowan. Moving on, page 73, very important part, paragraph 16.5, the revised Outturn General Fund stood at 22.9 million, which was 12.9 million greater than the minimum required level of allocated balances. Good. So they gave 4.5 million to our beloved One Hounslow programme, and we had the privilege of interviewing the very senior people there. And I'm a very simple man, so I noticed they'd only spent less than 200 quid so far, and asked them why they wanted the balance, and they all took the Fifth Amendment. That's quite serious, and it indicated to me whether this is almost money laundering, where the money's being parked to cover some ambiguous transactions. But furthermore, look at page 64, colleagues, and you'll see that this One Hounslow is becoming, I think, 1.5 Hounslow. We have 1,260 pounds of additional staffing or a unit cost. That's a horrendous sum. So I set out to get the salary bill for this beloved council. When councillor Cowan started in 2017, 18, it was 74 million pounds, 74.5 million pounds approximately. At the current position, it's nearly 90,000 pounds. What an increase. Where's that money gone? How are you going to pay for it? But having heard from councillor Bruce and others, and I've forgotten the name there, Guy, sorry, councillor Lambert, what fascinates me about members of the Cabinet when they make statements? No one heard Tom Bruce say, yes, we're on our second Ofsted report, and we ain't doing very good. I went to children's panel last night, and we're supposed to have the minutes of meetings with our young children typed up within the specified time. 85% should be done within the prescribed time. Less than 50% are. So what that means is whatever that conversation has with that child, it's delayed in presentation. Guy Lambert talks about the efficiency of his department. Let's look at the Lampton empire. We have, yes, another two, give me 10 seconds, another 2 million pound loss in the Lampton empire. We have Colo completely on its knees, so it requires another 1.1 million. Lampton has lost over a million pounds. And one of the reasons is a lack of management response to poor forecasting and/or the strain on voids. I think councillor Cowan mentioned voids when we were dealing with Hounslow Homes. Being serious, what it indicates, councillor Cowan, and I admire your ability to buy 500 flats and other properties very quickly with your colleague, Mr Matthews, but do we need this huge management overlay to exercise a quite simple restraint? My final point is, I'm very worried about air pollution in Chiswick. I've been trying to get them to spend a thousand pounds out of that dreadful fund you give us to radically alter our local borough. What I find is that there are 2, 2.5...
Councillor John Todd, you've got 30 seconds left, please.
I'll just take 30 seconds and give me a chance to breathe. The whole borough just has 2, 2.5 PM readers, which means Cranford and the rest of the boroughs haven't got a clue, a clue, sorry about that, how this pernicious item called PM2, which kills kids by jamming up their lungs, are being read. Two in the borough. Now, this is after two years of declaring an emergency. I'm not quite sure whether councillor Dunn is ringing 999 or 111. Seriously, we must do something about air pollution reading. It's simply not good enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor John Todd. All right, I would like to invite now councillor Candice Attenborough, please.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me? I stand tall, I always feel like I have to lean in. I just wanted to come back on a couple of points that councillor Todd made, first of all, because I was in the same meeting as you last night, so just want to clarify that the Ofsted report, I think that you're talking to is a specific Ofsted report about one of our children's homes. But if you want to know about Ofsted in general for our children's social care, then we are good, and our most recent one, and we've seen dramatic improvement, and I think everyone will really welcome the results of that Ofsted. I also just wanted to make a point, I agree with you that we have to get better around our minute taking of our children's reviews, they're very important, but I used to work for the council in what I call the glory days, before austerity, when we had a Labour government, and I didn't know anything else to compare it to, but now I see how good things were back then. But yeah, I remember, and I know, I think this is the first time I've ever mentioned KPMG, even though lots of my colleagues have mentioned them a number of times over the years, but it was after they came in and they cut a lot of, some middle management, but lots of posts across the council, which included the beauty of having minute takers in meetings. And now what you'll find in a lot of these meetings, you might have social workers who are having to take in turn to do these things, and then they're having to provide these minutes after meetings when they've got huge, huge caseloads, much bigger than they had in the glory days, because we haven't got the funding that children's social care desperately, desperately needs. And if we really want prevention, if we really care about our children, then we need to have central government funding. I just wanted to come back as well, I wasn't going to speak because I think lots of you have heard me time and time again talk about the pressures in adult social care, which is mostly more completely about demand. You know, it's nationally known that the demand is going up, and I always remind people that we're not just talking about the aging population, people getting older, people becoming frail, people getting dementia, but we're also talking about huge increase with children with SEM becoming adults with SEM. Our disabled community is growing, our community with people with learning difficulties is growing, and more and more we recognise the rights that those people have to independence and good life, which costs us money. So we need the government to put their money where their mouth is and make sure that it's funded properly. But I did just want to come back to councillor Musso. My heart started actually beating when you talked about pressure, and pressure makes diamonds, and I just, you know, we all do know that analogy, and I think there is some real diamonds in this establishment. I also lead on workforce, and we've got people working in difficult circumstances, under a lot of pressure, putting in the extra hours and trying to meet a really difficult challenge when you've got smaller budgets but you're trying to get better outcomes. But pressure, I just feel like you need to get out there and see what pressure is doing to this nation. It doesn't always produce diamonds. I work in a youth offending institute, and the pressure that those children, the backgrounds that they've come from, has led them to be going out and killing each other on the street. Pressure in my adult social care leads to people who have to either choose to work, but then they can't care for their relatives, or they have to only be allowed to work a certain amount of hours in order that they can get their benefits, and that's because the government won't pay carers properly. Pressure in the professional caring industry where people aren't valued and they're not paid properly, pressure that people who've got disabled children feel. So I just think when we're talking about pressure and diamonds, it just feeds that whole ideology of the Conservative Party of just work harder and work paid. It's not true. Lots of people work really, really hard, and it doesn't pay, and we are about changing that, and I'm really proud of the work they were doing here in the council to do that.
Thank you, councillor Candice Attenborough. We've got still a few members to speak, but we have to, you know, think about the other business as well. So I would like to take only two members. So first one is councillor Hanif Khan, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. I actually wasn't really going to speak, but I just had to just clarify one small thing for councillor Musso, when you refer to One, One Hounslow, I think you might misunderstand, you only need one thing, but actually One Hounslow has got so many projects on the go and has done so many things. So I think you misunderstand when it means one. I think you might need to just elaborate your mind a little bit more and think outside the box a little bit more, and I'm happy to have a discussion with you about all the amount of work that is going on. I mean, austerity, we know it's caused such a huge damage to our communities up and down the country, and, you know, we've already heard our colleagues talking about that, it is so important, and the devastating effects that it's been having on our public services. And it needs to protect the most defenceless in our society. And we've heard about children's at risk, we've heard about the disabled adults, the vulnerable people in our services, and also how we rely on these services from our clean streets to our libraries and all of our children's services. And I'll give you one fact that you might want to take back as an idea, as one single idea, is that if you know since 2010, we've had 60 pence taken out of every one pound that has come to us from the government, and since 2010. So how is it that we're supposed to manage our services with having such amount of cuts? The interesting thing is where you mention about the amount of money that's coming through education, and I welcome that. It very much is a Labour policy, because when you look at the world at large, you've got three main things to get this economy, get the thing going. One is investment in our education, which is a slightly slow process that takes some time to come to fruition. And then you talk about the workforce, which is there now giving us money, and then you talk about the health of our society. Now, all these three things need to work in tandem for us to prosper. The only area that ever I hear about the Tories and the government in place looking at is the workforce. They ignore our disabled people, the people who need our help. They ignore the education that's required in our schools. So you kind of understood a little bit about what we're saying by investing in education, which we've been banging that drum ever since I can remember. And when we talk about the ideas of One Hounslow, I mean, One Hounslow, if you look at it, it's got so many projects that are on the go, that are there... it's got so many projects that are on the go, that are there for a preventative approach to reduce the budget challenges that we have. And it's delivering on those as well. And also through the work that it's doing, it's creating lots of efficiencies as well, where monies will be saved. So I don't think that we are very narrow-minded in our approach. We are working tirelessly. And when you mark the 96 projects that you were referring to, that shows that we've been working hard, we've been thinking about it, we've been doing proof of concept. We haven't been sitting on our laurels. We've been working tirelessly and we are seeing the benefits of those. And when you look at just some of the No, I won't, sorry. You've had just a second.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Would you like to answer?
Councillor McGee, no, thank you.
Thank you. So when you look at our corporate outcomes, what we look at, what we think is a priority, these are looking at people for good homes. And you've seen some of the actions, what we're talking about today with over the 500 homes that we're buying. And we've been invested in that. We've got that money coming because of what good council we are. We look at businesses to flourish and for local people to enjoy good quality jobs. You've seen the amount of work that we've done in the apprenticeships, how hard we've been working in that.
Councillor Khan, you've got 30 seconds.
That's fine, because I can finish this off within that time. So when you talk about the One Hounslow, you need to understand how it works. There are eight outcomes and there are four pillars which everything is built on.
Point number four.
Councillor Khan, just hold on.
I've got another 30 seconds, don't I?
Yeah, yeah. Councillor Musisho, what basis would you like to put the point of order?
Point number four, point four, or point five, is a point of explanation about the One Hounslow. If the member could explain, how many projects are working out of the 96, please? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that a point of order? It's a question I thought that comes as an intervention as opposed to point of order.
Councillor Musisho, I think that is not the point of order. So I would like to, councillor Hanif Khan, to finish up, complete your request, please.
Yeah, so because of that point of order, that intervention, do I get an additional 30 seconds, do I, Mayor? Well, thank you. So I had 30 seconds and I've got a minute to go. Okay. No, it's fine. So that's when we look at what happens. So the other thing is when we talk about levers for change and we talk about how the One Hounslow is working, very simply, it looks at a people-centred approach. It looks at the partnerships that we have had and what we've done. And when you talk about the LGC awards, that kind of highlights and totally contributes to the way the One Hounslow is working. If you look at what was asked during that process, you'll see the work of One Hounslow. The point I'm going to make is that we have not been sitting on our laurels and we've not been thinking about only one idea, fella. We've been thinking about over 90 ideas.
Councillor Khan, councillor Khan, please finish up, please.
How many seconds, sir?
Finish already, run out, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much councillor Hanif Khan. That's very strong. Now, the report, the second has reserved her speak. So would you like to speak? Otherwise, I will go to the councillor.
I'm going to be really, really brief, Mr Mayor. I want to thank councillor Rajua and the team for their absolutely sterling and hard work and a speedy recovery to councillor Rajua. I think briefly, a couple of points that I want to make is that you've seen how councils have responded to the pandemic over the last 18 months. And that is exactly what we, as a local authority, will recognise for in the work that we've done. And I think that just really goes to show how important public services are on this day and age. Councillor Attetone and councillor Tom quite rightly, eloquently explained and illustrated here how it's absolutely crucially important that public services, particularly children's services, adult social cares are absolutely funded. There isn't a day that goes by where you see something in the news as a result of whether it's not funding in the NHS or adult social care or children's services, which is absolutely heartbreaking. I've been a councillor since 2006 and each year it becomes increasingly difficult to sort of balance the books. I just want to point out one thing, which I kind of find it a little bit worrying and a bit offensive, I have to say. And it's the smug comments that I've heard in this chamber now for the last few meetings. And it's about the £20 voucher scheme. And we've had some snidey comments about a £20 gift. But I came across somebody recently in the borough who receives £100 a week on benefits. Now, £20 is quite a lot for them. So let's stop making those silly remarks. It might not be, it might be not anything for you, but it does for some people. So on that note, all I can say is that I commend this report here and I thank everybody for all their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Leedbat. Now, I would like to invite councillor Steve Corrane for some of the report, please.
Entertaining as always on this side of the chamber, usual smoke and mirrors. We've heard it since 2010 when we got elected back in and of course, 2014, 2018. And then in May 2022, when we get back in. So we just get used to it. But I'm really pleased that councillor Attetone reminded me about how much the Tories spent on KPMG. Was it 5.6 million, 5.9? It doesn't really matter, does it? They couldn't even manage their own services. They had to get KPMG in to do it for them. And if I remember rightly, one of the first things that councillor Sharma did, who's sitting at the back here, majestic as ever, what he did was sacked the guy who was telling Peter Thompson what shoes to wear, what colour tie and shirt he should wear. I think he was on £100,000. So it was all right spending money there councillor Todd, but we shouldn't spend it on residents. If you look at what's happened over the last 18 months, massive increase on people claiming council tax credits, universal credits, emergency payments, massive increase in that. The biggest number of residents on furlough in any other borough in London at one point, massively affected by the downturn in the aviation industry. And what did the government give us? What did it give the aviation communities? Unless they were Tory ones, Gatwick, they got about £11 million support. We got nothing here in Hounslow. They got nothing in Tower Hamlets for the City of London. So the government only looks after its own, only looks after its own.
Please be quiet and do not disturb while other members contributing. Councillor Musisho, please.
So, and I did not praise, and just to make it for the record, Thomas, that councillor Bruce and I did not, have not, and never will praise this Tory government for anything they do. I did not, councillor Musisho, and that is now in the minutes. So whether it's building new hospitals, 40 new hospitals, where are they? They've got, if you look at the BBC website, I've looked at it this afternoon, they've got the government's introduced three categories and what means building a new hospital. I think it's actually only six are going to be built out of the 40. They're saying they're putting more money into policing. They took £20,000 out of London. £20,000 seasoned, experienced police officers protecting our communities, they just took them out. And now they're trying to put some back. They're not to be trusted. They're not to be trusted. They do not look after our residents. They never have. That's why our residents repeatedly vote us back in. They trust us with their money, councillor McGregor, they trust us with their money. We spend it wisely, we spend it appropriately. And most of all, what we always do is look after those people at most disadvantage. They're the ones that we're in this room for. They're the ones that we care about and we will always do that. And if I could just pick up about the £20 voucher. I was celebrating a small business Saturday on Saturday and I was in Chiswick and I went to two shops, you'll see the social media on that. The butcher couldn't be more pleased about the voucher scheme. I asked him, do you think it's a gimmick? Absolutely not. He said, I've got an elderly woman here who was absolutely over the moon when she got her voucher that meant that she could buy meat for a change. It's a good quality meat. It means a lot to lots and lots of people. It is not a gimmick, it's well thought of. And if you look at the biggest spending areas, it's in Chiswick. Funny that, isn't it? So the people that deride it over here, they're the ones who are spending the most of it in Chiswick. So I absolutely commend the report, like to thank councillor Rajua and the team for once again doing a great job on behalf of the residents and businesses of the borough. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Steve Corrane. And now both House of the Member put their points in view, which is very good, thank you. It's now coming to the vote. We've got the seven recommendations on this report. So I would like to go with all in one. There are seven recommendations and I would like to go for the vote, it's all in one. So I would like to go for the vote for the four, please. Thank you. And against? Thank you. And abstentions, please. Thank you very much. It's now reported, carried, thank you. Okay, we now move to the agenda, item number six. A reference from the cabinet again, Treasury Management Midyear Report 2021-2022. Please see page number 118 to 127. And we've got the timing allowed for 30 minutes. We now move to the item six. Member will now note that there is an appendix to this report in the Part Two section of the agenda at item 2022. Members may refer to it in the decision on this item. But please avoid referring to its specific content as it contains information which is examined from publication. So now I would like to invite councillor Corrane to propose the report, please.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move the recommendation to Borough Council for the Treasury Management Midyear Report 2122. And I withdraw your attention to the summary, some very good information there. But what caught my eye earlier on today when I looked at this was actually on page 121. It says there, black and white, 41, the council operates a balanced budget. A balanced budget. That means that the team are doing a good job. That means that the councillor Rajua and councillor Shaun are doing a good job. And we've got a balanced budget. We are required under law to do that and we always make sure we comply with the law. Cash flows. Again, I'm sure councillor McGregor and Todd will forensically examine the report, find a few little holes that they'll exaggerate with their spoken mirrors as they normally do. But I think the heart of the report is, we operate a balanced budget and we're prudent. And if you can see on page 120 under the report summary, you look at our short-term investments and external investments, they're all sound. And if you look back on the yellow pages, you'll see that as well. And the Treasury Management Strategy was approved in March 2021. So we're doing what we said we would do on the tin. I'm conscious of time, Mr Mayor, so I'm going to keep quiet and I'll save my fire for the summing up when we hear some of the interesting and fanciful comments from the opposition.
Thank you very much councillor Steve Corrane. I now look for the second, please, anybody second?
Thank you, I'd like to second the report and I reserve my right to speak, thank you.
Thank you very much for councillor Leedbat for seconding the report. I now would like to invite the member to debates on this matter. Thank you. Councillor McGee, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And the issue here with the Treasury Management Midyear Report, let me just preface my remarks by saying that comments were made about councillor Peter Thompson. He's not here to defend himself, so I will. It's untrue, it's a lie, end of story. Next question was the question about the government's support. Hanif Khan, my dear friend there, councillor Hanif Khan was vocal. We've heard that funding went down by 60%. Actually, it's not true. Because if you look at Appendix C from last year's budget report, you'll discover that we had a table covering Covid grants funding for 2021. And you see that total funding directly supporting council expenditure came to £42,800,000. And then in addition to that, we had the Business Rates Retention Grant, which wasn't part of government funding 10 years ago because the business rates were held by the government until they were actually turned back to local authorities to use because that's where they belong. Business Rates Retention Grant was £54,846,000. That's where the 60% went, matey. So why don't you get your numbers right? You just can't do it. You pick a number out of the sky, you think, because you've said it and it's Labour Party policy, it's true. It's a himera. It is not true in any sense whatsoever. The fact you believe something is fine. You have your beliefs, we all have beliefs. But you have to actually be rational when it comes to dealing with a council budget. The fact of the matter is, we are told this budget or that budget is balanced. Well, it may well be balanced the time it's set because those are the numbers that people declare. But when the environment is spent and then overspent, of course, it's not balanced. If you have a group where demand is so great, like education or adult social care or child social care, one understands what's going on. But don't pretend you have a balanced budget at the end of the year when you're carrying forward effectively unsaved promises of 10 and then 10.8 and then 14 and then 26.8 and then now more. Come on, wake up, smell the coffee, understand what's going on here. Other issues here, which we'll be bringing to the fore during the election campaign because we've got a great story to tell, we'll leave it, we'll leave it till later because it's late and you're tired because you can't deal with the figures anyway. And I know you're tired of them because you prefer not to have to do something you can't understand. And you're right, I understand that. You're all good people, you just don't understand it. The important thing about the Labour Party, unlike the Conservative Party, is that Labour Party looks at options and then says, oh, we need to spend more money. But it's not your money, it's the taxpayers' money. It belongs to people like other people who are not members of the Labour Party, whom you deny access. Come on, wake up. Have a cup of tea if you can't smell the coffee. Mr Mayor, I'm just putting to bed some of the issues that were raised in the previous debate. In this particular case, the midterm report is the midterm report. It's a factual matter, it's rational, it reports what the council is saying. Thank you so much. Thanks very much for our financial professionals. If you understand it, good on you. If you don't understand it, don't worry, it's okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor McGee. I think, oh, yeah, councillor Lambert, please.
I'll be very brief and just welcome the fact that councillor McGregor is no longer suggesting that we go to the markets and borrow money for no purpose as he did when this was first, because borrowing is cheap.
Councillor McGee, please be quiet. Thank you councillor Guy Lambert. I now would like to invite the second, Lillibat, who reserve your right to speak.
Mr Mayor, I'm happy to move to the vote, given the time. Thank you. Given that we don't know anything about numbers.
Thank you very much councillor Lillibat. I now invite councillor Steve Corrin for some applause, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I did warn everyone we would get another round of smoke and mirrors and we did, of course. And there was some suggestion that someone lied. I don't know who that was directed at. I hope it wasn't directed at me. I'm sure it wasn't, Gerald. So the important thing here, again, and we talk about their money, our money, the government's money, what we do with it. So they completely disregard the fact that when they set up their VIP list for procurement for PPE, millions upon millions and millions was misspent. I've got someone, quite rightly councillor, looking to me, billions of pounds misspent, given to their mates down the pub was one of them, wasn't it? He met them a couple of times in his local. His, I don't know what it was, 10 million, something like that. Never had a contract for PPE before, but there they were rushing them out. And already the select committee has been looking into that and it's not looking good for government. I don't trust this government with money. I don't trust with my money or anyone else's money. They've let us down year in, year out since 2010. They either take it away or they give it to their mates. And you've already heard from councillor Lambert about Rishi Sunak's constituency, how they benefited compared to those in London. And it goes without saying that this pattern of levelling up means dumbing down for London, dumbing down for those boroughs in London, particularly labour ones that need all the financial support they can get because of the high deprivation levels. We're not going to get that. And London's going to suffer so that they can shore up their red wall. So all of the jokes at the CBI about pepper pig, no one's laughing about pepper pig now, are they? No one's laughing about that. And the fact that there's thousands upon families who will be destitute this Christmas, looking forward to further rises in inflation, probably, cost of living going up and no support for the government. So I'm really pleased we, Shantin, who came up with the idea and the proposal for the £20 voucher. It's done good. It's brought a smile to many people's faces in the borough and I'm pleased we've done that. And we will continue next year to support the most honourable. Councillor Bruce has really highlighted that. Why didn't the government say we will fully fund school meals during the Covid, all the way through? Why has it left it to councils to have to do it? It's mealy mouthed and mean. The nasty party is alive and well at number 10. That's what they're doing to London, dumbing down, making us the sacrificial lamb for them to shore up their blue wall up in the north. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Happy to move the report again.
Thank you very much councillor Steve Corrin. I know that in both House of the Member, they have spoke out and concluded the debate. Now I would like to move to the vote, which is the single recommendation vote, a single one point. So first I would like to ask for the vote for, for votes for. Thank you. Now I would like to be against. Anybody against, please? Thank you. Now last is the abstention. Anybody abstention, please? Now, thank you very much. Thus anonymously passed the report. Thank you. May I also ask member formally now to note item 22, which is the appendix. Unless anyone wants to ask any question on its later in the meeting, in which case we'll then exclude it, exclude the press and public at the relevant time. Thank you very much councillor McGregor. Hope all the member noted this one. Thank you. Okay, I will repeat again. I say that's, may I ask a member formally now to note item 22 on your agenda pack? Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, all the member. Now we move to item number seven. Item number seven is a review of polling districts and polling places. I would like to invite councillor Pritham Grewal to propose the report, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, 2013 Act requires the council to do a review every five years. The next one is not due until 2023-24. But due to the boundary changes, it's necessary for us to do it before May 22. Audit and governance committee formed an all party panel to take forward the polling district review project. And there are a number of meetings and it was discussed properly and consultation was done on 30th, from 30th of June and between 30th of June and 25th of August. Here we have a draft proposal in front of all members to consider subject to two changes. Number one is Hanslow West to vote at Hanslow Heath Infineon Junior School, Martindale Road, instead of a community centre which is outside the ward. The second one is Cyan and Brentford Lock to create an additional polling station for voters north of the dock to vote at Digital Dock, High Street, Brentford. We managed to find alternative venues for 10 mobile units. There were two issues there. Number one, the mobile units was very expensive. And by finding alternative cheap venues, we managed to have a net saving of £33,750. And also the officers were not very happy to work in the cabins due to Covid reasons. There will be only one or two people allowed at time. And if the weather is bad, people will be waiting outside on the footpath. So for that reason, we have found all the venues instead of the only one we found, not found is one and because there is no other alternative for that. So with that, I'll move my report, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Pritham Grewal. I now would like to see the second, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Happy to second the report, reserve my right to speak.
Thank you very much councillor Steve Corrin. Now I would like to invite the member for debate for this report. Thank you. Councillor McGregor, please.
Mr Mayor, I just want to thank councillor Grewal for a very good sessions we had when we were looking at these issues. It was non-party, very, very, very supportive, very honest. And I just want to say that this is a great report and I know a couple of my colleagues might want to speak. But I think in general terms, we are with councillor Grewal on this and I'm very happy. And of course, we're with him because we like him. Thank you very much.
Councillor McGregor, you are very nice. Thank you very much. I now would like to invite the Steve Corrin. Let's see, you just reserve your your, reserve your right to speak. Just hold on a second. Almost it is too late coming out the hands of, yeah? Okay, I think right. Anyway, yeah, can I invite the councillor Ranjit Gill, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to thank Pritham Grewal. We worked very well with his team and it was a pleasure working and sorting out the new polling stations. Okay, thank you.
Councillor Meses, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I also want to extend my thanks to councillor Grewal. But the one thing that I am still unclear of as to why we've got polling stations in different wards. And I know that's something that you've worked on. We did find during the last by-election that quite a few contraventions were, I believe, you know, I guess crossed. How can you reassure us that that will not be happening and we can work cordially, as councillor McGregor has said, to deliver a fair election result, a fair way for everybody else? Because, as you know, I did put through a formal complaint as to one particular member in this group that I felt that was being unfair on the day. If you can address that, please, that'd be great.
Thank you councillor Meses. For your response, I would like to invite the our chief executive, please.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. As returning officer, all complaints dealt with via me and investigated appropriately. And then if there are any outstanding complaints, then they should be directed to me, councillor Meses.
Councillor Meses, and they have been investigated and there was nothing to be found.
Thank you very much, chief executive. I think there are no more members, so I would like to invite the councillor Steve Corrin for the speak of your reserve, please.
Nothing further to add, Mr Mayor.
That's very kind. Thank you. And I would like to invite the councillor Pritham Grewal for some applause. Thank you.
Nothing more to add. Thank you very much for the Tory councillors to support the report as well. And I'll move the report again, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Pritham Grewal and all both members of both House of the Member. So the debate is now ended. We got again need to vote for this report. So we've got the single recommendation here. Then again, I will start first with the vote for the four. Thank you. Against? Thank you. Any abstention? Thank you very much. The report is unanimously passed. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number eight. Appointments to committees and other bodies. We now come to the appointments, which is standing item on our agenda. Is there any more nomination? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all. We are moving now agenda number nine. Decision taken under the urgency arrangements. Member, please note the report. Thank you. Okay, we are now coming up to the item number 10, agenda number 10. I understand that the councillor Kamaljit Kohar will be asking this question. In the absence of the councillor Smart, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So we now come to the council question. We have a six this evening and up to 45 minutes to deal with them. May I remind you that when asking this supplementary question, you may make short introduction, which helps set the context of the question, but may not make speeches. Finally, may I ask also draw the member attention to the supplementary agenda where written responses to some of the council questions have been provided. I think all member do have the supplementary paper on your table. And we now start with the first question this evening. As councillor Smart is unable to with us this evening, may I ask the councillor Kamaljit Kohar to ask the question, please?
Thank you. So my question is to councillor Attetton. Could you please share with the group and Borough Council tonight, how many London Borough Hanslow apprenticeships are in receipt of the London Living Wage?
Thank you councillor Kohar. Quite a short and sweet answer. All of our apprenticeships that we offer here at the council, we pay London Living Wage. This was relatively recent decision and a decision I'm really proud of. As I hope everybody knows, we pay London Living Wage in this council. Not all councils do pay London Living Wage. And it was a decision that was taken, wasn't taken lightly because it does cost us money to pay London Living Wage. But something we're really proud of. We really want to make sure that everybody who works for us can, you know, afford to live in London. And I think it's really important that people recognise that people who do apprenticeships aren't just young people. We provide apprenticeships for people of all ages who want to work, come and have an apprenticeship at the council. Some people are already at the council and they're looking to re-upskill or they're looking to have a career change. And we wouldn't want them to be financially suffering because of that, because they're taking that decision to sort of further their skills, et cetera, and increase opportunities. So yeah, I'm really, really proud that we made this decision a little while ago and that we do pay London Living Wage to our apprentices.
Thank you very much councillor Candice Attetton. I noticed that there are no supplementary questions. So let's we move to the agenda number 11. Now this is the councillor Asmaa Grewal to ask the councillor Steve Corrin, leader of the council. May I ask councillor Asmaa Grewal to ask the question, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Corrin, could you please tell us how many small businesses have been supported by London Borough of Hanslow since the start of the pandemic? Thank you.
Thanks very much, Miss, and thank you very much for the question. So before I come to the answer, which I have got, I just think it's important to stress that, as you know, through the pandemic, we've been providing payments to businesses through direct payments of grants and through business rates relief. We generated sales through the infamous, according to some people, shop local voucher scheme. And we provided a whole range of support to support business during the various changes in restrictions to both general and specific advice and guidance on practical strategic aspects of operating a business. So financial support is over £150 million that's been passported to local businesses. And we've given that money to over 2,500 businesses. We are the borough of business. We really are. And I think, again, one of the other reasons we've got the award was because it was mentioned by the judges, that strong relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, the strong relationship with our high streets and how we're doing everything we can to support high streets right across the borough, from Chiswick to Felton. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Steve Corrin. May I ask the councillor Asmaa Grewal for the supplementary question, please?
I was just going to say councillor Corrin by how much, but you've already told us. Thank you. I was just going to say councillor Curran by how much, but you've already told us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, both of you, councillor Steve Curran and councillor Asmaa Grewal. Thank you very much. Let's move to the next item is agenda number 12. Is the councillor Michael Dennis to ask councillor Lambert, cabinet member of highways, recycling and companies. May I ask councillor Michael Dennis to ask the question, please?
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could the cabinet member finally give the councillor an update up to 31st October 2021 of the collection percentage rate of recyclable products recovered from domestic premises?
May I ask councillor Guy Lambert to respond, please?
I have, of course, provided a written response to this, but I'm happy to read it out if councillor does.
Very kind. Thank you.
In 2020-21, the recycling rate was 35.4%, and this was a 3.9% increase on the previous year. The provisional data for quarter one, April, June is 34.5%. Note that we have to note that the data is reported a quarter in arrears and is subject to seasonal variations. The second note is the recycling rate includes all the waste collected from residential homes as well as the rate waste and recycling taken to our spaceway, our household waste and recycling centre, plus hazardous waste, clinical waste, street cleansing parks, bring banks, collected by council partners. And the data from the last four years is as shown, it's gone from 29.8% in 2017-18 to 35.4%. It's also worth saying that 2020-21, we were one of very few councils that went up in our recycling rate. We were beaten only in London by Westminster, which went up by more. And many councils actually went down in 2020-21. Thanks.
Thank you. May I ask councillor Dennis if you got any supplementary question, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and I note those incremental increases year on year, which is good. But our rates are still pitifully low compared to, say, Kingston at 48.6%, Richmond 43.6%, Ealing 48.3%. And they are just our immediate neighbours. What will the administration do to improve these meagre recycling figures? And has this administration considered market testing the borough's waste management service and seeing whether Hounslow's recycling rate cannot be driven up?
Councillor Lambert, do you mind to respond, please?
Thank you, councillor Dennis. Good questions. I mean, of course, one of the things about Kingston and Richmond is that they have very big gardens and garden waste is very heavy. And it greatly helps in pushing up the recycling rate. The recycling rate by weight is something that has been going for a while and is not, I think it's acknowledged, this is not a good way of measuring recycling success. Our recycling is particularly high quality. It all gets sold for, no, it doesn't all get sold. The food waste we have to pay for, but everything else gets gets sold. Gets sold for very good money, much better than the benchmark rates. And it's nearly all recycled in the UK with a small amount in the EU and a little bit overseas. So we're very proud of our recycling activity. We've also, we've completed a full service throughout the pandemic, unlike, for example, Richmond, who gave up doing garden waste for quite a spell. And we believe it provides excellent value for money and we are testing that and we'll test it further. Thank you.
Thank you very much for both councillor Dennis and councillor Guy Lambert for your contribution. Thank you. Now let's move to the agenda number 13. Is the councillor Ron Musisha to ask councillor Tom Bruce, cabinet member for education, children and youth services. May I ask councillor Ron Musisha to ask the question, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just out of just for context for everyone listening, very briefly, you may not all know this, but just to let you know, the local authority adoption services have now been delegated regional adoption agencies, but the legal responsibility still remains with us, the local authorities. So Hounslow Services are now part of the West, London West RAA, which is partnership between Hounslow, Brent, Hammersmith, Fulham and Ealing. So there, my question to councillor Bruce is therefore, how many children does, is he aware, awaiting adoption and are waiting to be placed with a family? As in children where the family courts have awarded a placement, for example, order, but they have yet to be matched with a family. Thank you.
Councillor Tom Bruce, please respond. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ron, for the context. I can scratch all that off my speech. So you've already you've already given that. A direct answer to the question is three, but a little context from me. We have 15 children currently on a placement order. Twelve of those have been matched and are going through the process. So all of those three, as a direct answer to your question, one should be this month. And we are working very hard on the other two. One has been in train for a little while, five or six months. The other only since last month. In addition to that, there have been 11 adoptions since April 2021.
Thank you very much, councillor Tom Bruce. Now I would like to ask the councillor Musisha if you got any supplementary question for him, please?
No, really, just I want to say thank you for finding that information out and helping. I just wondered as my supplementary, whether we can look at this in, sorry, just wondered as a supplementary, we can look at this in more detail as to see how we compare with Ealing. I know you've seen the figures. And is that something that we could work together to try and prove and drive up? Thank you.
Councillor Tom Bruce, would you like to raise one?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Ron, for sending me that data earlier as well. I do really appreciate that. I think I had a look at it this afternoon. Some of it is from Ealing. That has to be taken, not with a pinch of salt, that's unfair. I believe the validity of it. But sometimes when certain councils or other councils report on things, we have to look at that. So I want to check that data out. That's basically what I'm saying there. It also is 10 years out of date, but I appreciate the point you're trying to make is about us comparing ourselves with the others within our in our group and seeing whether there are improvements we can make, you know, where do we benchmark against others? I mean, adoption in general isn't a straightforward picture. It is about outcomes for the young people. It's not about meeting targets. You know, efficiency is not always the best way of looking at this. It is about making the best for the young person, whether that's long term fostering or adoptions. And it can be influenced by a number of different factors. So I think when we look at numbers and look at figures, we do have to take that. And I know you do, but I'm saying that for the benefit of everybody. We do have to take that with a little bit of pinch of salt and understand some of the issues behind it. I'm very happy to look at that with you, but also to provide some data for everybody and see where we're going and making this, making the best of this for everyone. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Just one last again. Thank you very much for the councillor Tom Bruce and councillor Ron Musisha for your contribution. Thank you very much. May I ask the Steve Curran to want to say something?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move suspending the standing orders until the completion of council business this evening.
Thank you, councillor Steve Curran. May I have any second, please?
I'm happy to second that.
Thank you. We've got now the proposal and the second. May I have a list? Vote for the extension of standing order, please? Against? Any abstention? Thank you. Now expansion is carried. Agenda item number 14. Councillor Kuldeep Thak to ask councillor Lambert, cabinet member of for highways, recycling and companies. May I ask councillor Kuldeep Thak to ask the question, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, during the Remembrance Sunday service, it was noted by residents along with several councillors that the street and area around the Feltham and Bedford War Memorial was not cleaned prior to the service. And this had to be done by volunteers instead of Hounslow highways. So how is the work of Hounslow highways being monitored to ensure proper street cleaning is taking place across the borough?
Thank you, councillor Kuldeep Thak. May I ask to councillor Guy Lambert to respond, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, councillor Thak. Yeah, Hounslow highways are subject to robust monitoring. And whilst the standards in this instance are clearly below the standard we expect, I can assure you that we are robust in our approach to monitoring street cleansing. Hounslow highways are subject to monthly contract monitoring by council officers and a quarterly board meeting with senior officers and lead members, senior lead members. The performance on street cleansing is discussed in each contract meeting. With any performance below standard, subject to financial adjustments in line with the with the contract. Council also undertakes an ongoing analysis of Hounslow Highway's street cleansing performance through our land management audit audit system, which is an accepted standard. Any street inspection which is below the standard we expect is subject to immediate rectification. Through our Cleaner Borough Programme, we have seen significant improvements to our street cleansing standards. And whilst this is an ongoing programme of activity, the percentage of clean streets is currently 94% with the year-to-date average at 96%. This is 1423 roads expected so far this year. We have expressed our dissatisfaction with the work around the war memorials. And when we have the network board shortly, I shall be expressing it very cogently because it was very, very disappointing. And we really expect that we expect better of them. And just a further note, the clean streets in last year was 93%.
Thank you, councillor Guy Lambert. May I ask Kuldeep Thak, councillor Kuldeep Thak, if you got any supplementary question, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, councillor Lambert has mentioned 1,423 roads were inspected last year. And I would like to ask when these inspections were carried out, were they random inspections? Or they were inspections soon after Hounslow highways did the cleaning? And if Hounslow highways have not achieved the standards that we expect and we do the monthly contract monitoring by officers and quarterly board meetings with senior officers and lead members, then what have we done apart from expressing our dissatisfaction with the services?
Thank you, councillor Kuldeep Thak. May I ask councillor Guy Lambert to respond?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kuldeep. Well, the answer is that we have a team of inspectors who inspect throughout the, you know, on a rotational basis. They don't go the day after the streets have been cleaned. They go, you know, according to a schedule. As I said in the written answer, there are financial penalties for some things that they fail to do. And we are, some of these financial penalties are pretty stinging. And we don't, we're very happy to impose those penalties where it's necessary. We also always, you know, the contract is always under review. As you will know, it's a 25-year DFI contract, which is only eight or nine years into its into its existence. So we have to work hard on that and we are working hard on that. And we hold them to account and will continue to do so.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Guy Lambert and councillor Kuldeep Thak, both of you, for the contribution. Now let's we move to agenda number 15, which is councillor Balraj Sarai to ask councillor Lilibat, deputy leader of the council and cabinet member for housing and social inclusion. May I ask councillor Balraj Sarai to ask the question, please?
Mr. Mayor, it will be councillor Sue Sampson that will be asking the question. Mr. Mayor, councillor Balraj has asked me to ask in his absence the following question to our deputy leader. What has been the impact so far on Hounslow residents following the £20 a week cut to universal credit?
Councillor Lilibat, please respond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I thank councillor Sarai for asking me this question because I too have been fairly worried about this over the last 18 months or so. Just to give you some context, universal credit is a social security benefit that which is means tested and it's paid to people who are on low income, whether they're unemployed or they could actually be in work and be claiming universal credit. The universal credit uplift provided, which was introduced by the government, provided a £20 a week extra money for those who were receiving universal credit and working tax credits. We now know that it was heavily relied upon during the pandemic. And however, the government decided to end the uplift in October despite the widespread concern and condemnation on this. We now know that millions of families relied on this uplift and it was estimated that around one in six working households were living below the breadline just before the pandemic and the in-work poverty was at an all-time record high. Now, as you will be aware, that Hounslow was amongst one of the boroughs that was worst affected economically by the pandemic. And we saw, we saw big increases in the number of people claiming universal credit and it was something like 80% in particular areas. For Hounslow residents, their local economic conditions continue to remain tough. And obviously, removing the uplift came at the same time as the end of furlough. We are waiting to see the full impact of what this is going to be. But we do know now that there's been an increase in the number of residents contacting us, the council for help because of their reduction in universal credit. Application for discretionary grant payments have gone up, including requests for buying food and utility bills. And the actual number of people, residents who are on universal credit, hasn't unfortunately reduced and it remains at 40,000, which is double the, doubled the figure before the pandemic. I'm also quite shocked to see that the number of people who've contacted food banks has gone up. And I think it's something, I'm just shocked to hear about this. There've been an increase in 380% in terms of people contacting the food banks. So obviously, a big struggle here for many families. Obviously, in Hounslow, we remain absolutely committed to supporting the most vulnerable and we will do that through direct help, whether it's help with grants or with preventative measures that we have in place. And of course, this will be a key cornerstone of our refreshed corporate plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lilibat. And I will also would like to thank you to Sue Sampson on behalf of the Balraj picking up the question. Because of the original questioner is not here, so therefore I will not ask the supplement. There are no facilities for the supplementary question. And I would like to thank you, both of you, for contributing this question to councillor Lilibat and councillor Sue Sampson. Thank you very much. We now move to item number 15. Oh, sorry, that's an item number. Sorry, that's an item number 16. Right, this is the, this will now be proposed. This is now motion, yeah? Agenda item number 16 is about the motion. And this will now be proposed by councillor Ranjit Gill and seconded by the councillor Ron Musisha.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would not read the motion because it's right in front of you. So I'd like to speak on it, give you a bit of background on the motion. The College of Policing states the improved street lighting in the form of situational crime prevention that involves increasing the levels of illumination on streets and other public areas, spaces. The college also did various reviews and found both violent and property crime was reduced by an average of 21% in areas and improved street lighting compared to areas without improved street lighting. Further studies were carried out by the College of Police, and they found that 38 fewer crimes were observed in areas with improved street lighting. This was based on just five studies. Furthermore, violent crime on an average of nine fewer crimes were observed in areas where there was improved lighting. And this is based on nine studies. Now, sometime back in early 2000, Painter and Farrington conducted a study in Dudley and Stoke on Trent. And they found, although they did not mention the cost of increasing, the cost of increasing street lighting, but stated that financial savings that reduced crimes greatly exceeded financial costs of improved street lighting where it was installed. And we're all aware of the Suzy Lampu Trust. And they also conducted people's perception on safety. And they found that where the lighting was dimmed, this also led to various crimes. And 52.8% of women and 38.8% of men said that their local communities were less safe when lighting was dimmed. I further add that the London mayor himself, in a report from the College of Policing itself, based on the Campbell Collaboration System review, concludes that improved street lighting has a positive effect in reducing crimes, burglary and theft. So this is why I'm proposing that the council reinstate the street lighting. And also in 2019, the report by the London mayor, when asked where in London women's most recent violence against them experienced had happened, and the majority of them said on the street. So therefore, I propose that we should take this motion. And I suggest that Hanslow highways and the relevant departments now act to ensure lighting levels are increased and adequate to allow for proper vision and safe passage in dark areas or dark hours. And this will help improve the life of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Ranjit Gill. Before I go into ask the second, I just would like to note for you all the member that we have three motions to consider this evening. And only 30 minutes under the constitution in which to discuss them all. So may I ask member to bear this in mind when making the contribution? Thank you. So I would like to invite the councillor Ron Musisha to second the motion please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to second the motion and speak on it immediately. Firstly, I want to acknowledge councillor Giles, who could not be here today, who was together with councillor, together with councillor Ranjit Gill, were able to discuss this with us as a group. And we agree that the motion should be put to the council and the council had a duty to protect its citizens first, above anything else. And lighting is one argument of that protection. It's a simple argument really. Lighting will act as a deterrent, especially in areas often hidden off in the dark corners in our borough. This is where gangs and people who are up to no good usually frequent, believing that they are out of sight. It's a very simple ask, that asks us as a council, support this motion. So we're asking the council to act and implement the measures as councillor Gill has just mentioned, and drive to reduce crime and protect its residents. Word you know in London that the force has carried out some brilliant stop and search items. And they've arrested 937 criminals, perhaps with knives or any paraphernalia of that nature. But the effort is not enough because after just seizing 2,745 weapons, there are still unfortunately 29 homicides in London this time, just now. And we're not yet at the end of the year. So who knows? By the end of the year, we could be having beyond 30. We already, we all know and have acknowledged through social media, I believe, about Ali Abco Ali, who unfortunately was killed in Brentford, our ward. And this is something that perhaps if we had better lighting and better system of address, of finding this sort of potential perpetrators, we could have avoided something like that. But the, there are other issues. But this is about keeping women and girls safe. And I think one of the issues about lighting, I have to take a case from Wendy Matthews, who is a resident of ours in Turnham Green in Chiswick, who wrote to myself, councillor Gill and councillor Bitoff. And I believe it's councillor Bitoff who is dealing with the case right now. She was concerned that, on where she lives near Millrow, the lighting is not appropriate for her. And she cannot, for the sake of it, see where she's going. So she reads, she wrote to us saying that the ascending approach of the steps to the footbridge over the railway line at Acton Green Common near Millrow is, in my view, very poorly lit. It's therefore a security risk for me at night, especially as a woman, and it's a dangerous trip hazard. That's from her, Wendy Matthews. What are we doing? Well, central government through Priti Patel has already acted. She's, she has already put an act to address violence against women and girls and has put in place some measures so that, so that anyone that is being violent towards women and girls is being properly reprimanded and is being properly sentenced with an extended jail sentence to make sure that we, that we put these perpetrators out of reach of our women and children. As I've said before, the tougher sentences are supported on this side of the chamber and it always have. We also support in this side, families. Whereas I think the other side would like to just give money to throw at everything. I want to support families to ensure that we educate our young people, our young boys, to make sure that they perpetrate, they do not perpetrate this violence against women and girls. So the government has conducted its first ever survey on women and girls that have been disproportionately victimized through violence by men. 1,800 responses were recorded. And in the end, the government commissioned Maggie Blyth to be the National Police Officer for reducing and preventing crimes against women and girls. So these are the things the central government is doing. And what we're asking today is what are we, the council, doing? And the question is from my colleague here, is that just by putting the lights up and lighting up the dark spots in our borough, we could be saving a life. We could be making that difference. So I hope that you can support our motion in accordance to good, to good relations between both sides of the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Musisha. We've got now the motion proposal and the second. Now I would like to invite the member for the debate on this motion. Thank you. May I ask the councillor Sam Hon please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was hoping perhaps to hear from the Labour side first, if that's possible. If it's not.
Well, this is your choice. So you are the first one, so you can go ahead please.
Okay. This first really came to my attention when we began having serious problems in Chiswick. So I think we're talking back in 2018, 2019, and when we called public meetings with the police. At that time, discussions with officers revealed that we can adjust the lighting on individual lights. So for specific areas where we know there are problems. And it was my understanding at the time that those adjustments were going to be made in the areas where we had high rates of crime at the time. Subsequently, it turned out these were just suggestions to us or were just discussions off the record. And those changes were not made. In order to have an immediate impact on the problems that we had, there was a very large expenditure of time and resource by the police. And I think we've now heard that research evidence is there that the lighting can at least partly solve the problem. We have to say, and we acknowledge that there is a cost to this. And it was part of what was put forward. And it's in our climate emergency action plan that we will reduce lighting. I recognize the difficulty, but I think, as councillor Musisha has said, the cost of doing this is far outweighed by the benefits that will be received by the community. And one thing I would say is that perception is hugely important. And in Chiswick, I speak of Chiswick, but I know it's true of other areas, areas that Labour councillors represent, women and vulnerable people, and even some people who are not vulnerable, choose not to go out when it's dark and they can't see clearly because the street lighting has been turned down. This damages the night time economy. And that has, is irreparable really. And while we're still struggling, trying to struggle out of the COVID and the impact of the lockdown, we should be doing all we can to encourage people to feel safe, to remove this perception that we are a dark borough. I move to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Sam Hon. I now would like to invite councillor Unshatsoody please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor. So when I read the motion, I welcomed that we're going to discuss safety of women and girls. Unfortunately, what I heard from my colleagues was not about the safety of women and girls, but other issues. And of that, I'm quite disappointed. I'm also disappointed that the only solution they've come up with is lighting. So as a young person who has lived in Hanslow my whole life, I used to get the bus and I would get off the bus. My mum would ask me to let her know when I'll be getting off the bus. And this is on the Bath Road, a road that is very well lit. But she didn't think that it's about the lighting that is going to affect me and my safety. She knew that she wanted it to be safe for me as a young person. And it was just across the road. It's not very far. But still, I would let her know when I'll be getting off the bus. So she should either meet me at the bus stop or she'd watch me across the road. Now that I don't live with my mum, what do I do? What I do is I share my location with people. I have keys in my hands to protect me. Regardless of the lighting, it's got nothing to do with that. Priti Patel saying she's going to sentence people and give them harsh sentences is a bit too late. What are we doing before that? Telling people they're going to have harsher sentences does not prevent crime. What we need to do is we need to actually tackle the reason why women are being attacked. Things that we could do include things like having better funding, improving funding in the police, improving funding in our schools, improving funding generally from the government would be great. And that is how you tackle crime against women. Mr Musisha is shaking his head over there. But I am a woman and this is my experience. So please accept that. We need to tackle violence against women. We need to tackle social media. We need, there's lots we need to do here. So Priti Patel's little, oh, we'll give harsher sentences. How many people are actually caught? How many people are actually persecuted? Sorry, not persecuted, prosecuted. Quite different there because the women are being persecuted. But how many people are prosecuted from the crimes that they have committed? Again, it's not about the lighting. Having lighting did not prevent Sarah Everard's situation, did it? She was murdered and that was in a well-lit place. Again, yes, it was. You're shaking your head, but I've seen the videos. I've seen the evidence, as I'm sure many people have. And just because you want to reiterate a point about lighting, let me just say this to you. When you think about more things than lighting, it's not just about the lighting, councillor Musisha.
Thank you councillor Unshatsoody. May I now invite the councillor John Abidah please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think we're listening to a lot of whataboutery here because this is a motion about street lighting. Of course, we would like to have a huge debate on crime and the protection of women. That would be fantastic. There isn't time here, but there is an issue here. Okay, thank you. Yes, I will.
Councillor John Abidah, just hold on a second. Councillor Guy Lambert? Sorry, it is misunderstood. Councillor John Abidah, please carry on.
Thank you very much. This issue arose for us, yes, in Chiswick, but as Sam has said, it applies across the borough. In 2018, after actually a series of young men were attacked. So we are aware of crime being an issue and this being a wider concern. We held a public meeting. It was organised by councillor Gill. And the tri-borough commander at the time came. And the first thing he said was he'd had a look around the area. And in his view, the lighting was too low and that that could be changed and would make a difference. The incidents we'd had were of muggings and some knife crime and stealing of mobile phones. So this is absolutely crucial, whatever you say. And I speak as a woman too, with safety on my mind when I go outside. So we called for it in 2018. And this was, we wanted to change the dimming and trimming. Then in 2019, at our second public meeting, we called for it because you hadn't listened. And all we're asking you to do is to increase the amount of lighting for a longer amount of time so that people can get home safely from public transport and whatever else. Then what happened was it appeared in the retail report because it's a great concern to traders, including but not only in the night time economy. Night time happens in the winter at four o'clock in the afternoon. And I remember being upstairs in the top room of a cafe on Chiswick High Road. And the owner, whose business was not doing very well, this pre-pandemic in 2019, looked out. And we looked down at streets which were covered in leaves, which were really inhospitable to walk across and in dim lighting. And she just said, why would anyone go out there to come here? And that is the reality. Lighting has an important effect on how we live our lives. And then in 2021, we called for it again. You haven't heard us in four years. And are you going to listen tonight? No, you're going to start talking about whataboutery instead. We had the incident that has been outlined by councillor Musisha of a bridge, a footbridge over the railway line. And I don't know if laughter that was coming from the Labour side was to do with the fact that we didn't know whose lighting it was. We don't know whose lighting it is. I've contacted TFL to find out if it's theirs because it's a footbridge that goes over the railway line. However, the issue is on the ground approaching it as well as on it. And it's on our side that it's bad. The Ealing side is fine. So I would, on that basis, I'm just asking you, please, will you listen? We can have a whole big debate about crime, which is a different issue. But this motion is about lighting on our streets, which is wholly inadequate. The savings were tiny in comparison with everything else. And as the point was made earlier, costs of this save huge amounts elsewhere, including what people do in the night time economy, spending in our local independent shops and businesses, any other business as well. So I hope you will pass this motion and do something about the very poor lighting. My journey here this evening was horrible, absolutely awful. I've got dark spots all the way from my front door. My journey here this evening was horrible, absolutely awful. I've got dark spots all the way from my front door to the Tube station. It's not something that I want to do late at night. I hope you will support this motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Joan Abidah. May I now invite councillor Guy Lambert, please?
Thank you, Mayor. You asked for no speeches, we seem to have had four, plus quite a lot of casework. I shall be brief. We have got improved street lighting in the London Borough of Hounslow. We had over 14,000 new lights fitted in the early years of the PFI contract. We are now rolling out that new lighting for housing estates across the borough, and we're improving lighting in parks. And that actually does come out of the work that was done in Chiswick, where there was crime in, I believe it's Rocks Lane area, where there was no lights in the parks. We're now putting lights in the parks where necessary. Now, before the change in the streetlight arrangements were made, that was consulted heavily with the then-borough commander and the Community Safety Partnership, and they have no objection to it. But what we did do was we said that we'd undertake some crime reviews if the police thought that lighting was contributing to crime. And we've done that. One of those was in the Rocks Lane, and the light was fixed there. In other places, there has been no appreciable, there's been no evidence that lighting has contributed to crime. In addition, there are certain footpaths around the borough where we had dimmed the streetlights. And as a result of some concerns that people had about feeling safe there, we put them back up again. Guess what? It didn't make any difference to how safe they felt, because the difference between 20% dimmed light and not dimmed light is not visible to the human eye. So that didn't make any difference. When we cut back some of the vegetation, that did make a difference. So we've now dimmed them again, nobody noticed. So in terms of your casework about the bridge, Ron, by all means, if you've got a problem in a particular area, yes, we can adjust the individual lights. Send it to me if you're not getting answer from the casework system, and I'll take it up on your behalf. Thank you, Ron or Joanna. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Guy Lambert. May I ask now Catherine Dunn, please, the captain member?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Guy, for outlining that so clearly. So what we have is a motion from the Conservatives that is asking us to do something that will not make a difference. And yet they are pretending that this shows how much they care about the safety of women and girls on our streets. We are committed to making our borough safe for women and girls. It's not what-aboutery to say that any more than it was for Ron to tell us all about what Priti Patel supposedly is doing. Ron asked, "What are we doing in this borough?", and so I am going to talk about what we're doing in this borough, things that actually make a difference, not things that are imperceptible to the human eye. We do support the Street Space scheme, which is a new, sorry, Street Safe scheme, which is a new initiative from the police whereby people can tell them anonymously, if necessary, or if they feel more comfortable that way, about areas that make them feel unsafe. So this is not about reporting a crime, which should always be done through the normal channels, through 999 or 111. But there is an additional way now to say, "These particular areas make me feel unsafe." We will work with the police to make those areas feel better. And if there is inadequate lighting in particular spots, then we are committed to addressing that, as we have done. But what we're not going to do is increase the level of all the lighting across the borough to no effect, because that's not taking people's fears seriously. We will continue to support the victims of crime against women and girls, which takes place on our streets, yes, in the dark, it also takes place in broad daylight, it also takes place in people's homes. And we, as a borough, do a huge amount to support those victims. And yes, this is a crime that has been increasing, and domestic violence in particular has been increasing across the country, and it's up 25% in our own borough. We've responded to that by putting in place additional supports, additional funding to support the victims of those crimes, specialist services for women, specialist services for children, specialist services for people from ethnic minority communities. We also, as befits a white-ribbon borough, support the Men and Masculinities Programme, which helps men who want to change to do so. But it has to start before that. We have to prevent this from happening in the first place, which is why we fund programmes through our schools, the Learning to Respect Programme that we support, that promotes healthy relationships in children before they even get to that stage of having those relationships. So yes, we know that women want to feel safe at home, they want to feel safe on the streets. They don't want to be fobbed off with things about increasing street lighting that can't even be seen. It's just ridiculous. What they want is to be taken seriously when they do report a crime, whether that's by a stranger or by someone they know. They want the police to take that seriously, they want it to be dealt with properly and in a sensitive manner. We are here to help provide the support for women and anyone who is in that situation. And that's what we're doing to keep women and girls safe in this borough.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Catherine. And I would like to invite the councillor Candy Satterton, please.
Thank you very much. Well, I do welcome this motion, because I think it's been really good opportunities for us to talk about violence against women and girls, and especially to hear all of the really brilliant work that the council is doing to support our Violence Against Women and Girls strategy, and also to hear from councillor Lambert about the work that we already do when it is recognised that there are particular hotspots where lighting may play a part in making people feel less safe or potentially increase crime. This motion, I think possibly councillor Gill probably should have read it out, because you said you weren't going to read it out, because we'd read it. But then you, yourself and councillor Mashiso, then went all around the houses and kind of talked about street lighting and gave lots of other examples that aren't actually to do with the motion. You specifically say in the motion, "Attacks against women and girls in our neighbourhoods are at an alarming rate. Given the recent tragic events in London, which have impacted on the safety and security of women across the region, it is manifestly reasonable and appropriate time to reinstate street lighting." But then there's lots of conflating. You talked about a report where you said that theft and burglary has gone up. That's not specifically violence against women and girls. And you talked about Sadiq Khan report where women said that they didn't feel safe on the streets, but you failed to say that's all the time. You know, women get attacked on the school run, they get attacked in the daytime. It's not necessarily at night time. Women are at risk on the streets from men, locked all of the time. Councillor Mashiso, you talked about 29 killings this year, absolutely appalling number, but that is about children, who have killed children. Eighty-one women have been killed by men since Sarah Everard was killed. So your number was obviously a really important number, but you're sort of missing the point. If this is about violence against women and girls and street lighting, then that's not really relevant to this particular motion. So I think we just have to be really careful. Women are not safe on the streets, and they're not safe in their homes. If we want to tackle violence against women and crime, we have to look at the complete picture. And just changing the street lighting, I completely accept that it can sometimes make people feel more safe. I am a woman, I don't like to be going in a particularly dark alley because I'm conditioned to think that I'm less safe there. But actually, if a man wants to attack me, he is going to attack me, whether the lighting is up or down. And that is the sad truth, because women are getting attacked in the daylight, they're getting attacked in their homes by their partners, a very small number by strangers, awful as it is, and it's all been highlighted that women are getting attacked and killed by strangers. But the work that we're doing at the council is really tackling violence against women and girls, and that's the work we're doing around domestic abuse. So I can't support this motion, even though I welcome the fact that it's created some really important debate about tackling violence against women and girls. But yeah, I won't be accepting this motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Candy Satterton. Now I would like to invite councillor Corinne Smith, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to start by reminding councillor Mashiso, we aren't his women and girls, we're not property. We are individuals in our own right, and I think you should be more careful how he speaks. I'm a woman who lives in the borough, I have poor eyesight, I find the lights entirely adequate, and I usually feel safe walking home at night from council or wherever else. There may be small areas that need lighting, but there's no way the lights need increasing across the borough. They're perfectly adequate. I've never had a complaint from a member of the public about the lights being too dim. I've had two that they're too bright. And, you know, I think it's bizarre when you have a government that has cut the police, the courts, local government services, mental health services, that you think you're going to fix it all by increasing lighting in the streets. It's not going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Corinne Smith. I now would like to invite the councillor Mel Collin, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And first of all, can I apologise if I caused you any grief when I put my hand up, first of all? Notwithstanding that, I would like the minutes to reflect that it is wholly inappropriate for us to be talking about the tragedy that happened in Brentford just over a month ago, simply on the basis it's in the hands of the police and at a very delicate stage. And therefore, we should not be discussing that until maybe in the future, there is an appropriate time. We just offer our condolences to the family and best wishes to Peggy, and just leave it at that, if I may. It has absolutely nothing to do with this motion whatsoever, and I would love that recorded, because councillor Mashiso mentioned it in his remarks. The fact of the matter is that this motion is muddled and befuddled, because it's actually skewed to what may have been two really good motions, except that we are, in this borough, doing all that we can with other agencies on making sure that there is a good level of street lighting, and where there is total inadequacy, trying to work with agencies, as well councillor Bidolf and councillor Mashiso from his meeting last night would know what we're doing around the community stadium in Brentford to improve safety around there so that there is adequate lighting for folk to get away from the grounds and at the moment to get to it. But the important thing is, I think of this motion, is that you skewed two very important but completely different issues. So if you had concentrated on violence against women and girls, I think you would have got some pretty good response from our side, because it is an ongoing and disgusting and vile and growing, sadly, indictment of our communities. But we do have ward panels as well, so we are getting to our communities, and we are using different instruments in order to connect with our communities so that they know that the councillors, the police and local bodies are working together to actually make our communities safer. And I will end in a minute with a bridge story of my own. Lighting. Anyone that sat with me on the planning committee, when I don't defer items, over a long period of time, I'm one of the most vociferous people on the planning committee about adequate lighting either on a development or close to it. So yes, don't ever dare, don't ever dare bring a motion like this accusing the ruling party in the London Borough of Housing of stepping away from its responsibilities for the safety of all of the communities, because we do and we are working as we go. So I won't vote for this motion. As I said in the beginning, it's befuddled and muddled. Bring back two motions that we can talk sensibly as adults.
Excuse me, councillor Mel. We have run out of the timing, so I need to cut you off here. Standing order time is 30 minutes allowed for the motion, so we already run out of the timing. So the motion is... Mayor, are you proposing the suspending of order? We have already done that one, so we've got no more. So I would like to ask the councillor...
Can we go to the vote, Mr Mayor?
I would like to ask the councillor Bath to speak first, and then I will come back for the sum up.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will be very brief. I am very dis... Mel's absolutely right, I'm very disappointed in this motion, and I absolutely will not be voting for it. And I think the reason being is, is that although it does shine a light on a very, very important subject, violence against women, which is absolutely right, it's been increasing at an alarming rate. But I really, what I find really objectionable is that it, the line that it's because of the tragic events, it's manifestly reasonable and appropriate and timely to reinstate street lighting. That's absolutely not right. I mean, we've heard today, street lighting alone doesn't necessarily make it safer for women. And for me, it doesn't address the issue of why violence is committed against women in the first place, and it doesn't address the issue of how we prevent it. So for that reason, I will not be voting for it. In terms of the, I've heard today people saying that street lighting is not adequate in the borough. I don't happen to agree. I actually had to fight with Hounslow Highways to get the street lighting on my opposite me to be dimmed, because I felt it made me vulnerable and it made me feel unsafe. So I don't agree a blanket approach is the way forward. Absolutely, you know, we should look at areas where we think there could be not, you know, increasing crime, et cetera, and where we've got evidence to show that. But blanket approach, absolutely not. I think by cranking up street lighting across the borough isn't going to necessarily stop violence against women at all. We need a much more intelligent approach. I think this is a very knee-jerk reaction to a really serious issue, and I'm quite sort of sad that, you know, it's been sort of trivialised to street lighting, actually. And I read something, actually, a couple of, about a week or so ago, about a campaign that women had organised across London, and it was actually about street lighting. And this is what, that I saw come out, and this is one of the slogans, which I think is absolutely right. It says, "Two dead a week, and you give a street lighting." I think that says it all, doesn't it?
Thank you, councillor Lily Bath. Now may I ask to councillor Renjit Gill for some of the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, the motion was about safety and security of women and also street lighting, but we did not ask for a blanket street lighting. It was to cover various dark areas. I mean, I'm aware, Candice, councillor Satterton, that UK women, UN Women UK estimated that 90,799 women have been sexually assaulted in public areas in Britain so far this year, while 97% of the women say they have experienced some form of sexual harassment or violence in one or three, and one in three will experience sexual violence in some point in their lifetime.
Please, will you take an intervention?
No.
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. So, and also, this has to come to an end. And one of the protesters in the London Reclaim the Night March on Saturday, the 27th of November 2021, said, "I do not feel safe walking home alone in London at night anymore." And we need more than just asking women to protect them. And we need more than just asking women to protect themselves. So I vote, we go for a vote.
Thank you very much for councillor Ranjit Gill for summing up. Now, I would like to conclude the debate here and we need to move to the vote for the motion on this one. So first one is the, remember that's for the recommendation of the motion. Thank you. Against the recommendation? Thank you. Any against, sorry, any substantive? Now, thank you. So the motion is lost. Thank you very much for all because of the running out of the timing. So we are not going to take the second motion. We are now moving straight to the item number 19. Okay, I've got instruction here by the, both my left and right. So we are going to do the suspension of the extension of the order. We already done it that one, then what would you like to do? Okay, so there is so much disturbance here. It cannot go, you know, carry on as I want it. You know, this is not very good. So I like the help, but it's too much overrule. Anyway, let's go to the second, second motion, the number 17. So please listen carefully and also do not disturb the mayor while we are running the agenda as per instructed, please. Okay, now I would like to invite, this will now be proposed by the councillor Gerard McGregor and seconded by the councillor Michelle Dennis. We now, sorry, Michelle Dennis here. We now move on to the second motion. As a member will see, this is now being proposed by the councillor Gerard McGregor and the seconded by the councillor Michael Dennis. So I would like to invite the councillor McGregor to propose the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Happy to propose this motion. Great motion. It talks about diversity. Let me read the motion out to you. It is important. I'm speaker. It is important that we recognize the diversity of our borough and more importantly, understand the needs of residents from all backgrounds, including the Anglo-Irish. Without enough data and knowledge of our residents, we cannot serve our neighborhoods and communities properly. Therefore, this council notes the significant size of the overall Latin American community in London, Latin American, which is growing in size and supports the longstanding request from the mayor of London himself, that the Greater London Authority and organizations within the Greater London Authority family follow the example of some other London councils, which includes Latin American in the ethnicity section of the authorities' monitoring forms. Well, you can't get better than this. I mean, we've got lots of these chaps and chapesses wandering around London. So basically, what have we got here? Well, we've got 250,000 people of Latin American origin in the UK, a substantial number of those people live in London. Now, here's a fact for you. In 1945, the biggest gentleman's club in London had a 35,000 membership. That's huge. And it was the Argentine Club. The Anglo-Argentine community is 100,000 people, many of whom are from my own community in Central Ireland. They all love horses, you see. So the Argentinians are great people coming to London. They're not residents, but they form part of the community on a regular basis. We've got 113,500 people of Spanish extraction. And of course, following the Treaty of Windsor of 1373, with the Portuguese king in London agreeing a treaty of alliance with England, we've had a longstanding relationship with Portugal. You may not be aware of it, but at the banquet following the treaty signing, there was a soup created. It was named after Windsor. It's Windsor Brown Soup. There we are. You learnt something tonight, move on. The important thing about this is that joking apart, the diversity issue is highly serious. If we don't know who's living here, we can't serve their needs better. And many of these people are long-term residents of the United Kingdom, but the growth from 2010 to 2021 was meteoric. Even after Brexit, we had a rise in the population of Lucitanian and Hispanic residents in London. We need to recognize them. My colleague, Michael Dennis, councillor Michael Dennis, councillor Michelle Dennis will be very happy, will be very happy to provide further evidence of why this is an important thing. It's so simple to do as well. No big issue, just add another line. Latin Americans, please stand up, be counted. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Oh, and by the way, you don't need to ask the officers, you're in charge of this meeting.
Thank you, thank you councillor McGregor. Sorry, you know, I used to say that, Michael, but it's kind of misunderstood there. Yeah, anyway, I would like to invite the Michael Dennis for the seconded, please.
Very kind, thank you, sir. I'm just wiping the mud off my face. My fellow councillors, this, this, sorry, my fellow councillors, this is a proposal that we should, we should all get behind. It's not party political, it's not controversial. It is entirely sensible and it's the right thing to do. The collection of these additional data would lead to more accurate assessments of our residents and to more tailored and effective planning and initiative from the council. This will enhance the council's decision-making powers and ensure that the council truly understands the makeup of its residents. The options available to Latin Americans on ethnicity forms, white, black, Asian or other, clearly inadequate. They will lead to anomalies, inaccuracies and errors in any council initiative that is reliant on the collection of ethnicity data. According to the Office of National Statistics, accurate data collection on groups of ethnicities ensures consistent description and comparison of statistics. And categories allow the ONS to arrange its data according to common features and the resulting statistics can be easily reproduced and able to be compared over time and between different sources. I can see how an expansion of the category Latin American would add value to the council's reporting, particularly with freedom of information requests and the council's own public sector of quality duty. I could continue to speak of the great value that the inclusion of Latin American in the ethnicity section of the council's monitoring forms would bring for the council and residents. But this motion is, it's about, it's more about who we are. It's about what we stand for. Is Hounslow the sort of council that will allow Latin Americans to say, yes, I am Latin American, rather than remaining in that neutral, uncommitting, inhuman ethnicity of other? We must fully embrace the concept of diversity because it's our greater understanding of our diversity, of our differences, of each other, which unites us as one people and as one nation of Great Britain. This nation has a place for Latin Americans, just as it has a place for people of all backgrounds and ethnicities. Let us therefore embrace diversity in its entirety and follow the examples of these other councils and the GLA. I ask you to, as councillor Candy Saterton aptly puts it, to share the love, recognize the benefits of diversity in this proposal and to give your support to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Michael Dennis and councillor Gerard McGregor. Now, I would like to invite the member, and I also would like to remind the member that according to the standing order, every motion is 30 minutes. So the second and proposer has already used the almost 10 minutes. So you've got remaining 20 minutes to debate. Please make yourself short. Thank you. Okay, are you sure councillor McGregor, you want to propose to go for the vote? Okay, so then we will go for a debate, okay? Councillor McGregor, please do not disturb again. Right, I would like to invite now first John Abidah, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Of course, I support this motion wholeheartedly. And I wondered if I could, given that councillor Giles can't be here, refer to the words that she would have given if she had been here. So these are her words. As someone who has grown up in Hounslow to mixed heritage, I've often struggled with what should be a relatively straightforward question when asked about ethnicity. Am I British? Yes. White British? Yes, but. White British Irish? Yes, but. And while I recognize that this motion could be perceived as self-serving, with there being only two other British-Irish Salvadorians who I personally know, I would be remiss in not taking my role as a representative seriously if I wasn't making sure that the very underrepresented group of Latin Americans in Hounslow wasn't even able to identify as such. This is a proportion of the population that has consistently been invisible in the UK, although, if you know, you know, SABES. Oftentimes, we are mistaken for being Turkish, European, Persian, African, Native American and even Asian by people who can recognize the features of many of our ancestors but don't recognize the journey that those same ancestors have taken over many millennia to become Latin American. Due to there not being any way of capturing this data in current official forms in Hounslow, we don't actually know how many Latin Americans there are, let alone there are here, let alone in the rest of the UK, which means that as a consequence, we are underrepresented across the board. And ideas of what it is to be Latin American are very much aligned to stereotypical representations in the media. I think of Gloria from Modern Family or looking back, Desi from I Love Lucy or Carmen Miranda, although I realize these are rather old references. The connections of the UK and Latin America are longstanding. Simon Bolivar came to London to lobby for funds in his campaign to gain independence from Spain. But it is in the last 30 years, my lifetime, where we have seen the biggest increase in this group. And many, like me, are British born to Latin American parents and we are maturing. The increase in this number is linked to many things, and it would take someone more qualified than me to educate you on the reasons behind this. Let's look at the stats. According to report from Trust for London, a quarter of Latin Americans work in low-paid elementary jobs. Half live in private accommodation and a huge 90% have the right to work in the UK permanently. This goes against what most of what we see in the media. Ours is a young population with high employment rates, well-educated but working in low-paid jobs. The population is estimated to be around 300,000, the same as the Bangladeshi population was in the UK in the 1990s. Yet we are seen as invisible simply because we aren't counted. During the recent census, there were many awareness campaigns to ensure that those of us with Latin American heritage could be counted. We have the opportunity to change that tonight in Hounslow. If you agree to pass this motion, then we would become only the fourth borough in London to recognize Latin Americans, despite the GLA passing a similar motion back in July 2014. In 2019, the New Statesman published an article about how we, as Latin Americans, are one of the UK's fastest-growing groups and how we have been ignored by politicians. I'm very sorry I can't be with you tonight to talk to this very personal topic, but I hope that you see fit to make this decision tonight so that we, in Hounslow, can truly call ourselves an inclusive borough that welcomes and recognizes all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor John Abidah. May I now invite the councillor Lily Bath, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I thank councillor Dennis for bringing this motion here today. And of course, he's right that we absolutely recognize the diversity of the borough and the needs of the residents from all different backgrounds. They also note that the growing size to Latin American community across London and pay recognition to their contributions to the community across London and our community. In terms of our ethnic categories in Hounslow, and I see it's really important to take note of this, and this is taken directly from the census, our categories rather are taken directly from the census category by the ONS. And this is, this is for a reason because it allows us to easily compare our data between other boroughs. So we could only amend these categories to include specific ethnic groups where the local numbers indicate that there are, for example, a high number of residents from a particular ethnic group. In terms of the number of residents registered in Hounslow from the Latin and South Central American, according to the ONS figures in 2011, is 525. As you'll be, as you'll be aware, and we've talked about this a lot, Hounslow is an incredibly diverse borough. We have over 177 ethnic languages spoken in the borough, which suggests that Hounslow is home to a large number of ethnic groups. If we've got 177, that means we've got a large amount of ethnic groups that live in the borough. So it would not be feasible for us to identify all 177 ethnic categories on our forms. So we have to use the census categories in order not to favor any particular ethnic group. So in terms of the situation, in terms of the communities and the demographics in Hounslow, ahead of the Latin American communities in Hounslow, we have Polish at 9,478, Afghans at 5,162, Sri Lankan at 3,300, sorry, I will read this because I think it's important, Nepalese at 2,556, Somali at 1,360, Iranian at 961, Italian at 991, Russian at 927, Romanian at 829, Bulgarian 713, Burmese 528 and Latin South American 525. So of course, you can see that the large mix of ethnic communities that we have. We will be reviewing our ethnic categories when the new census data is published, which I think is sometime in spring 2022, which I believe is absolutely the right thing to do because that data will advise us of any changes that the council must make to reflect its demographics and to be able to meet the needs of the local communities. I understand that some other local authorities, and I think, believe that Southwark has done this, but I think it was right for Southwark to do it because their Latin American population is right. And so they were doing that to reflect the demographics of their communities. And I think we should be doing that's here in terms of our communities. But I don't agree that we should just do it as a knee jerk reaction and a tick box because that isn't really what it's about. And I think my colleagues will talk about some of the work that we've done in terms of, and you've, you've been a part of that in our equality workshops, where we've done work about really understanding the different types of communities within our areas, within our wards and the demographics and the inequalities around that. I think that's, that's something that we will continue to do, will commit to. But I think in terms of just adding a tick box at this present moment, I wouldn't think is appropriate and I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for the motion.
Thank you councillor Lily Bath. Please remind me again, every member wants to speak, so make yourself is in a bit shorter your, you know, input. So I would like to now invite the councillor, Candice Atterton, please.
Thank you very much. And we're listening to the response to the motion from councillor Bath. I feel like there's not really much else to add, but I think it's been made clear, even from the people proposing the motion, that if we're talking about inclusion and diversity, then it's really important that everybody is included and we can't just do one thing for one marginalized group and if we're not... And if we're not going to do it for other marginalized groups, I really welcome everything that councillor Bath has said. And I don't remember saying "share the love" in the council meeting, but if we're talking about sharing the love, then it's really sharing the love to all our residents. We're doing lots of work to make people feel represented. I think there is huge failings in the monitoring forms that are set by the government, but that's where things need to change nationally so that we can make those comparisons and make sure that we're all sort of singing from the same song sheet when it comes to data. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Candice.
Can we go for a vote now, please?
Are you proposing councillor Ranjit Gill for the vote?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Right. May I have the seconded, please?
Yes, I'll second it.
Councillor John Abidah is seconded. May I have a vote on this one, please? So I would like to invite the councillor Maghera for some of... Oh, sorry. I would like to go for the vote that you recommended. So first thing is for the four. This is for the vote. We are not going anymore for debate. Yeah, so we are going straight on the vote. So that's what you said. So that's why we are voting for the vote, not more any debate. So, yeah, so that's why, you know, it's for the vote, for the four. Now, anybody against? Okay, so if that is the case, then, you know, I still need to put the everything is incorrect. Now, I would like to ask for the abstention. Anybody? Now, okay, thank you. So if that is the case, then now it's carry on for the motion to be voted. So there are three motions, three again. I would like to go for, first thing is for the recommendation. For the motion? Thank you. Now, for the motion again, against the recommendation? Thank you. Thank you. Now, anybody abstention? No, thank you. Now, motion is lost. Thank you. Let's move to the next motion.
I have an objection because we voted earlier and you accepted the vote. No one voted against, and there was no extensions. And then you asked for the vote again. Sorry, you can't have a vote twice.
Now, councillor Ranjit, let me clarify. Yeah, first thing is because we were on the middle of the debate. Yeah, so, and then I've got the list of members who wants to speak, and you propose to go for the vote. So that's why I have to request the member, whether they are agreed or not. Yeah, so they did agree, so that's why. Yeah, then, because your proposal is accepted for the vote. So that's why I asked the member to vote. So if further clarification you would like to know, then here is the chief executive, he will explain to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to invite the monitoring officer to give clarity to this.
Yeah, so there's two limbs. So there's two limbs. So the first was on the debate, should it continue? So that's what that vote was on. And then the second limb is the motion itself. So that's what's just happened. So the first, so it happened quite quickly, but that is what happened. So just to be clear, the motion's fallen. So that's the... Yeah.
If you may, Mr. Mayor, further. Our tradition, obviously, is when that motion is put, the vote be put, it's usually done by acclamation by the chamber. What Mr. Mayor was doing is asking you to vote on that motion being put, and then went on to the substantive motion for a vote. That's what happened in that instance. So he's absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. Has followed the rules of the Constitution. But actually, it's usual in this chamber that that's just accepted as when that vote is put. That's our normal practice. But Mr. Mayor was absolutely correct in his interpretation of what happened then.
Okay, thank you very much for the both officials. So it's helping. Now, we are now moving to the agenda number eighteen. Again, this is the, this will now be proposed by the councillor Kuldeep Thak and seconded by the councillor Samhun. We now move on to the third and final motion for tonight. And may I draw member attention to a small spelling correction to the motion, which can be found in the supplementary agenda. In addition, I ask a member to note that councillor Kuldeep Thak will propose this motion, and councillor Samhun will be seconding it. So again, I would like to remind all the members that each motion is the thirty-minute allowance. So I would like to now invite councillor Kuldeep Thak to propose the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This motion is about climate change, and I'm sure the entire chamber is really very serious about tackling climate change. COP twenty-six was a momentous conference and a momentous occasion for the UK to host the presidency this year in Glasgow. Her Majesty's government, under the presidency of Alok Sharma MP, did a fantastic job in organizing and hosting this conference, which saw world leaders, voluntary organizations, and NGOs come together from across the world to discuss one of the world's biggest challenges, which is climate change. The conference has agreed a new deal leading on from the Paris Agreement, the Glasgow Climate Pact. This pact offers a breakthrough to tackling the climate crisis by agreeing to phase down the use of coal, reemphasizing the net-zero carbon emission target, and ensuring there are climate financing programs for adoption of this deal. Now, when we say climate change is a serious issue, we all need to work together. And we all know only offsetting carbon emission is not a complete solution to tackling climate change. We need to do more. We need to reduce the carbon emission at the source itself. And while we know that we're already taking small steps towards carbon insetting, why don't we officially endorse the Glasgow Climate Pact and agree on providing a six-month basis update on the levels of carbon emissions within the borough? Therefore, I would like to propose this motion that this council resolves to reemphasize its commitment to tackling the climate crisis, especially in the pledge to become a carbon-neutral authority by 2030, and provide regular updates on the levels of carbon emissions throughout the borough on a six-month basis, and for the authority to adopt a program of carbon insetting and officially endorse the Glasgow Climate Pact. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Kuldeep Thak. May I now ask the councillor Samhun for seconding the motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very sad that this is the last item on the agenda. I'm also sad that we come at sort of the fag end of our meeting to discuss it. It is probably the most important item on the agenda, certainly climate changes. I'd like to come at the motion, which I could read out, but I'm going to make Ranjit Gill's assumption that you've all read it. I'm going to come at it first looking at endorsing the Glasgow Climate Pact. Secondly, the need for regular six-month updates. And finally, on the carbon insetting. Those are my orders of priority here. There will probably be speakers who say that more could have been achieved with the Glasgow Climate Pact. I'm certainly one of those who believe that that's true, and Alok Sharma himself has spoken of his regrets. But it's the only Glasgow Climate Pact that we've got, and as a council, we should be officially endorsing and getting behind it. There is a huge amount of value in the agreement, and it is... If it doesn't include the Chinese, it does include most of the rest of the world. We should endorse it. The need for regular six-monthly updating. When we set out on this, let's call it a journey, an annual review seemed sensible. And we've had our first annual report, which has a lot that's excellent about it. It came to Cabinet in September. Just as a personal aside, I believe the annual report should be coming to Cabinet because surely there is nothing more important than this report on our progress in reducing our carbon footprint, our net carbon position. We will no doubt be told that the information is not available to do a six-monthly report. I would say that we need to be a bit more sophisticated about this. We need to say that because there is a lag in the production of the information, the first report should bring the information to us at the earliest opportunity so that we can, as a council, if it has to be the Cabinet, we can make informed decisions about this as quickly as possible. Because of COVID, largely because of COVID, all our plans have been disrupted, and financing for climate change initiatives has been compromised. So we're not, when we set this target, we weren't envisioning the place we are now. So we need to be reviewing our position, and we must have doubts about whether it's achievable by 2030 because things have changed. There may be people who are much more confident about us achieving that target than I am. But I think until we can all be confident of that, we need to be looking at it every six months. So as I've indicated, I see one report bringing the information to us, either the Cabinet or to the council as a whole, as soon as it's available. And then a follow-up report, which focuses specifically on the carbon footprint of the borough itself. You'll be aware that the big numbers are actually out there what everybody else apart from the borough is doing. But we can relatively easily, I am assured, obtain the figures for the councillors' corporate estate. And that, you know, a lot of this is coming from schools and councillor-owned housing, et cetera, et cetera. So the bigger information that comes from the borough as a whole, I could see is more challenging and requires external auditing. Finally, we come to insetting. And I think, without repeating what councillor Thak has already said, one of the missing bits at the moment is what we do with our investments. And our investments here, we are probably thinking about our, I think we are specifically thinking about our pension fund. And it's not really down to us to direct that as councillors. But as council members are on those body, on the body that makes those decisions or certainly oversees them, indirectly, we are responsible for that. And, I mean, we are, for example, still investing in fossil fuel companies. Not huge amounts of money, but those still exist. We need to be making sure that there is a shift in the way that our pension fund invests. Pension fund body members of it are aware, our advisers are aware of that. But this isn't a supertanker that we're trying to turn around. This is something which can be moved, and the movement should have begun sooner than it has. I think I'll stop there. It's late at night for me. There's a lot more I would like to have said to you. There are a number of quotes. But I think I'll leave it there. Just please support this motion, even if it's only to endorse the Climate Change Pact, which would show where we all stand. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Samhun. Before I invite the member to debate on the motion, I would like to invite our monitoring officer because we are running almost eleven o'clock. Thank you.
Yes, just to advise members that this council cannot sit beyond eleven, so there's not that much time. There's seven minutes left. Yeah, so just, so we'll need to vote before eleven.
Can we go to the vote?
Mr. Mayor, can I propose we go to the vote?
Okay, just hold on a second. You proposing the go for the vote, yeah? Okay, and anybody seconded?
I seconded.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ranjit Gill is seconded. So this group is stable, okay? Okay, let's move on then, before, not like the last time. So we will go for the straight on the vote this time, okay? All right, and now the debate is conclusion. And then, well, still, I would like to ask councillor Kuldeep Thak to some of the motion, please? Oh, sorry. Sorry, so no some of as well? So we will go to the, straight on to the vote. Okay, now move to the vote. For the recommendation of the motion? Thank you. Now, against the recommendation of the motion? Thank you. Now, any abstention for the motion? Got one? Thank you. Now, motion is lost. So thank you very much, all the members, for taking part on this motion. Now, let's, we move to the agenda number nineteen, which is any other matters that the mayor considers urgent? I've got none, so I hope nobody has it. Right, agenda number item twenty. Dates of next meeting, date of next meeting is the Tuesday, the twenty-five of January, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you very much. Thank you, the member, for all attending. And also, make sure that, you know, all members, sign your attendant books if you haven't done so. And also, make sure that, you know, all members sign your attendant books, if you haven't done so. Here behind on the table, so please don't forget to sign that one. And also, I would like to mention that everyone has followed the COVID-nineteen rule, the one you are going down on there. And then finally, I would like to say that happy Merry Christmas and good Happy New Year to you all. And I would like to announce the meeting is ended. Thank you. Hold on.